Good evening, everyone. Roll call, please.
Trustee Weekly.
Present.
Trustee McAvoy.
Present.
Trustee Wells.
Here.
Vice President Lawson.
Here.
President Marcus.
Here. We're moving on to item four, reconvene to regular session. It's six thirty-one. And the report out in closed session is that we listened to our attorney regarding the first item and adhere to the recommendation. And for item two, we listened to staff info was given to us and no action was taken. Again, welcome everyone to another Redwood City School Board meeting. I hope everyone's doing well and it's nice to see people in the room tonight. For those addressing the board, please fill out a Google Doc if you are online and if you are present, please fill out the speaker's card and give it here to Evelyn to my left. Si necesita interpretación al español, por favor llame al nueve siete ocho nueve nueve cero cinco uno tres siete y presione ocho tres siete siete cero cuatro uno y el signo de números para la contraseña. And are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, I would like to make a couple, please. So I would like to move action item fourteen point one after twelve point one this evening. And then I am pulling the Garfield single plan for student achievement and we're going to have it at a later date, a reported later date.
Are there any other changes? If not, hey, please get a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with this changes.
Seconded.
Roll call, please. Trustee Weekly.
I.
Trustee McAvoy.
I.
Trustee Wells.
I.
Mike, are you?
Mike Audio.
Could you hear me? I said I.
Can't hear you, Mike.
I get the green box. So I think Zoom is picking me up. Is it just not coming through to the room?
He's not muted. He's not muted.
We can't hear him.
So his little box lights up when he's talking. So.
Yeah.
Mike.
It's a, my guess is that the volume isn't on in the boardroom.
The volume on the screen? Where does the volume come from when people speak?
Comes from up there.
Do you want to try speaking again, Mike?
Sure. Can you hear me this time?
No, we still can't hear you.
Yeah, it's picking it up.
Do you want to log out? Log out.
Log off and come back in.
Sure.
Mike, Mike, I can hear you. So.
Let's see if we can hear Will. I wonder if we can hear Will.
Tails yours.
Five by five.
I think I heard you well, right? I can hear you. You can hear me.
Yeah, Mike.
You've got you now.
Good. All right.
Trustee Wells.
I.
President Lawson.
Hi.
President Marcus.
Hi. Item eight, oral communication. Do we have any oral communication?
Yes, Chris Robel. Robel.
Am I on? Okay, great. Good evening. Chris Robel, I wanted to talk about a concern regarding clarity of roles and responsibilities pertaining to the bond oversight activities, both the expenditures themselves and then the determination as to whether or not they're authorized under Prop thirty-nine state law. So I'm not the only one that's confused. By the way, I can guarantee you that if you watch the February second Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, they are also confused. So the CBOC has first of all, not reviewed any expenditures at either of the last two meetings I've attended, October twenty-seventh or February second. At the February second meeting, one of the CBOC members said that we should just trust the district, quote, we should trust the district and its auditor. They're responsible for reviewing expenditures and determining compliance. I don't believe that's consistent with your bylaws, but nonetheless, the next day I contacted the auditor Nathan Edelman. And he said that he relied on the CBOC and a subcommittee of the board to do compliance with respect to Prop thirty-nine. So I then asked, I was not aware of a bond subcommittee at all, which I've heard consists of Mike Wells, Janet Lawson, Martin Cervantes from the district, and apparently Will Robinson from a contractor, RGM Kramer, doing project management. So important to figure out the roles. It's kind of the Keystone Cops who's doing it, reviewing the expenditures. And Carl Landers suggested I get a call scheduled, but there's been no response from Mike or Janet. I've repeatedly called, I've sent several emails to try and figure out one, who's authorized? And so I'd like to know who's authorized this committee, this bond subcommittee? Is it standing or is it ad hoc? Who's on it? I'm not sure. I think I know, but I'm not sure. What is its charter or purpose and where are their reports? I'd like, and I'd like to actually consider this, if I could, a public records request to get the reports. Because my, if I'm correct, and they're deciding what bond expenditures are happening. And then they're also determining the compliance, which is what Nathan said. That's not visible to the public. So nobody has access. Furthermore, I realize it's only two people, so perhaps not subject to the Brown Act, but nonetheless, it's a subcommittee and those reports are going to the, if they're going to the board, they're only going on consent and there should be discussion about it. So especially on eight hundred and two thousand dollar contract with for six months of project management with RGM Kramer as an example. So anyway, thank you for I'm trying to get a meeting. Carl's trying to help me get a meeting and we're not, we're kind of in, not going anywhere in terms of getting maybe Janet and Mike and Nathan were trying to just figure out who's doing what, the roles and responsibilities. Thank you.
Chris, I know you wanted to meet after this meeting. I just, I'm not going to be able to because my son is leaving on an airplane first thing tomorrow morning. I've got to get him ready before he goes to bed. So. Yeah, I will.
And thank you for your comment. Any more oral communication?
For items twelve point one, twelve point two, and fourteen point one.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving on to item nine, bond program consent items. If I can please get a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Weekly.
I.
Trustee McAvoy.
I.
Trustee Wells.
I.
Vice President Lawson.
I.
President Marcus.
I. And moving on to discussion items. Twelve point one, measure T bond financing oversight overview, I'm sorry. Now, this is where we have oral communication as well, correct? Twelve point one.
There is, but I think let's have your, do your, we can do the presentation and you can do that afterwards.
Okay.
Not unless you want to go first, unless you want to go first.
I mean, we can see the presentation and then we take comment.
That's what I thought.
So we'll hear the presentation then and then hear the oral comment after.
Why not Blake?
Good evening, members of the board. Tonight, we have a presentation on a bond financing overview of the major T bond program. Joining us for this presentation is both KNN and Stifel. I'll allow them to introduce themselves as they present tonight. This is going to take us through the inception of the major T bond program to current with the sales, the three series of sales during this bond program. So with that, I'll turn it over to Blake.
Thank you, Rick. Good evening, everybody. Were you going to pull up the presentation just so the audience might be able to follow along? I'm in the meantime, just for those who don't know, my name is Blake Beam. I'm a principal at KNN Public Finance. We serve as the district's municipal advisor and have been working with Redwood City School District on bond financing related matters since two thousand nine. I'm joined here by Erica and Marcus. I'll let them introduce themselves.
Sure. Good evening, Erica Gonzalez with, with Stiefel. I'm a managing director in our San Francisco office. And I've had the pleasure of serving the district as bond underwriter, underwriter, beginning in two thousand sixteen, shortly after the passage of measure T. And I'm joined by my colleague, Marcus Peters, and I'll have him introduce himself as well.
Great. I'm Marcus Peters. I started my career just right up the street at Franklin Templeton on the municipal bond team. I'm now underwriting municipal bonds on the California Stifel Syndicate Desk.
So we have a short presentation for the board this evening, really to, as Rick mentioned, to recap, measure T and the process for which funds were accessed through the voter authorization. Starting with a brief recap, after a robust and comprehensive facilities planning process, voters were asked to approve measure T back in November twenty fifteen, which authorized Redwood City School District to issue up to a hundred ninety-three million dollars of bonds for capital facility improvement projects. And while the, the district-wide facility plan identified needs that were well in excess of the amount that was authorized, that was the upper end amount that could be accessed through a single bond measure at that time, based on conservative assumptions that were used to develop the measure T plan. On this first page, it outlines just some of the highlighted projects that the district was able to accomplish through this initiative at Alanta, Clifford, at Garfield, at Hoover, and so on and so forth. So some really great work was done to accomplish at least the first phase of priority projects for measure T. The bonds were not sold all at one time, but in three incremental tranches of financings, and that's reflected here in the middle of this page. One, series A was sold back in two thousand sixteen for the first sixty million, which covered a thirty-year term. Series B was sold in two thousand eighteen for sixty-seven million, which went out for roughly twenty-nine years. And then series C was sold in two thousand nineteen, which went out for a twenty-five-year term. You'll notice each subsequent series of bonds, the term was shortened to try and minimize the overall repayment of measure T as there was capacity under the thirty-dollar tax rate that voters authorized. On the bottom left, you can see the projected tax rates are, it's not just the projected, it's the actual tax rates and then projected on out for measure T with the red bar representing the thirty-dollar tax rate that voters approved and where tax rates have been and are anticipated to go through the life of measure T. A function of being well under the thirty-dollar tax rate, especially on the out years, coincides with, again, the conservative assumptions that were used to plan out measure T and the significant amount of assessed valuation growth that has occurred within the community since the time it was approved. See, am I pointing at the wrong thing? Want to go to the next slide? Perfect. And while we just went through some introductions, we thought again, as a recap of the process, just to clarify the roles along the way. KNN, which is highlighted there in the middle, serving as municipal advisor, our primary role is to serve as a fiduciary, which is focused on protecting the interests of the district and securing the lowest cost of borrowing for district taxpayers. We are, we're also very involved in the initial planning of measure T as we, as the district was coming off of its facility planning process. And then through the implementation of each financing associated with measure T in terms of not just facilitating the financing process, but advising on structure and timing of the bonds and also reviewing financing parameters and corresponding documents. And I'll let Erica talk a little bit about the role of the bond manager.
Sure. Thanks, Blake. In our role as underwriter, we work collaboratively with a financing team and provide input on timing, rating strategy and structure, really taking input based on our experience, work, being in the market and on a regular basis and providing that as a resource for the financing team and the district to be able to leverage as part of its bond program. Ultimately, our goal is to market the bonds to a wide investor base and set the interest rates on the bonds as aggressively as possible, given current market conditions and purchase the bonds on the day of sale, even if we don't have all of the bonds sold during that order period on the day of sale.
And then lastly, an instrumental member of the team was DWK, which represents the district as bond and disclosure council. They ensure compliance with all federal and state laws, preparing the authorizing resolution and corresponding financing documents. Janet Mueller is the lead from DWK and has been a great partner as part of the financing program as well. And then looking forward, I'll turn it over to Marcus just to do a brief recap of timing of each of the respective series of bonds that were sold.
Yeah, great. So what we wanted to do here is just really put together kind of a snapshot of interest rates in the municipal bond market and time periods in which series A, B, and C were sold. So what we have here is this is the bond buyer twenty G O index. So this is what you can consider an average double A two issuer borrowing costs in twenty years for the municipal bond market as a whole. It's put together by bond buyer and it's a survey amongst municipal bond traders. And so you can see here really, you know, coming into series A, the first two thousand sixteen series really kind of shows the district's ability to price successfully in very challenging market environments. Remember, two thousand sixteen, seventeen, lots going on nationally. We had a major U.S. election that year, created a lot of turmoil in the municipal bond marketplace with rates dipping and then increasing significantly. And this district was able to lock in a very low three point oh three percent true interest cost on that series A borrowing. Coming into series B, another very different time period, you know, as the U.S. economy really starts to take off post-financial crisis, we see interest rates rising for the first time by the federal funds rate via the Fed since two thousand eight and two thousand nine. So we see a rising interest rate environment. The district was able to get in right before kind of the peak there in two thousand nineteen. The peak in the Fed funds rate. And again, after that, we saw the U.S. economy slow down. Jerome Powell has to pull back interest rates and start lowering from that two point five percent Fed funds rate that we reached there in two thousand nineteen. And then finally, for series C in two thousand nineteen, issued at a very, very low two point five four percent true interest cost, which actually includes some taxable bonds as well, which don't benefit from state tax exemption. So very low borrowing costs there in the two thousand nineteen series C.
So over the next several slides, we're going to dissect each of the series of bonds in a little bit more detail and just highlight some of the main notable features from each.
Perfect. Thanks, Blake. And I, I think Marcus was talking about the interest rate environment in two thousand sixteen. The district was really able to really thread the needle here in between Brexit and the, the presidential, presidential election in two thousand sixteen and really able to lock in aggressive interest rates on behalf of the district and its tax, task pay, taxpayers. So as the district embarked on its initial sale of measure T in two thousand sixteen, the financing team worked very closely with district staff on the marketing plan for this inaugural series. We wanted to really take a step back and take some time to analyze both the district's credit and marketing plan for this inaugural series. The last time the district had been in the bond market was in two thousand and twelve. So we wanted to take this opportunity to really evaluate the rating strategy for the district. We took a deep dive into the district's credit. The district had an outstanding rating from Standard and Poor's at the time of A plus. Given the dynamics at the time, we felt very strongly after careful analysis and review that the district could achieve higher ratings by going to Moody's Investor Services and then taking advantage of a unique opportunity with the change in Fitch's rating criteria specifically for school, for school district G O bonds in California, where they were evaluating G O bonds for school districts in California based on a special revenue opinion, based on a law that had come into effect just in two thousand sixteen, S B two two two, which created a statutory lien on the Admiral Law and Property Tax revenues that were used to repay the bonds for the district. So taking that approach, the district went to both Moody's and Fitch for their ratings. And the district was a, received a double A two ratings from Moody's, a two, two steps above the existing A plus rating from Standard and Poor's and the triple A rating for the district's G O bonds from Fitch. With those two ratings and the preliminary official statement prepared by the district's disclosure council, DWK in the district, we used to market the district's bonds to investors, including bond mutual funds, banks, insurance companies, separately managed accounts, money managers, the list goes on. But that also included individual retail investors through a specific marketing program where we sent direct mailers to residents throughout the district notifying them of the upcoming bond sale and their ability to participate in that bond sale in two thousand and sixteen. That, that exact flyer is shown here on this slide as well. We have here on this side also just some of the specific steps that we engaged in through the pricing process specifically. We were engaged in very robust conversations with the financing team talking about market dynamics leading up to the sale. We highlighted one of the conference calls on August nineteenth, ahead of the bond sale, where we discussed market dynamics and structuring strategy ahead of that bond sale on August twenty-third. We got back on the phone with the district and the municipal advisor, KNN, to discuss market conditions, a preliminary interest rate scale for the district's bonds and, and reviewed comparable pricings that had been in the market in and around the time that we were looking to get into the market with the district's bonds. After robust conversations with the team and any changes applied, a consensus scale was established to get into the market with early the following morning. And on the next slide, we'll talk in detail about the results of that order period, the response from investors, and ultimately the success of the marketing effort that I just discussed.
Great. And here's the results of that, again, that two thousand sixteen sale. The district received a hundred and twenty-one million in orders for sixty million in bonds, resulting in an overall oversubscription that is more orders than bonds available for sale of two point oh times. And you know, and Erica mentioned the tremendous amount of participation from different market participants. And this is really kind of reached to the success of the sale. Here we listed kind of a distribution analysis of the types of accounts and leveraging each one of these accounts is very important for different parts of the yield curve as well as getting different coupons sold in the transaction. So you can see here, we have bond funds. Those are the Franklin Templetons of the world, thirty-one percent, bank trust departments, insurance companies, hedge funds, money managers. SMA is separately managed accounts. Those are professional money managers managing money on behalf of individual retail investors. And then individual true mom and pop retail investors. The people that received, for instance, a mailer called in and phoned in an individual order of say fifteen or twenty, twenty thousand dollars. You can see here, orders came in, as we mentioned, from a very wide investor base. And based on that, leveraging all those different investor types and that oversubscription, and we were able to lower yields by two to nine basis points.
And maybe just real quick, I know I don't want to belabor all this. If you want to go back, Blake, that screenshot at the bottom left, that I P R O, called the I P R O order monitor screenshot, it's been revamped since two thousand sixteen into the twenty-first century. But at the time, this was what was available to both the district and KNN to be able to to see the orders as they came in live throughout the order period. It's the same system that our underwriting desk and the bankers at Stifel are looking at and the sales people are using to enter their orders for that transaction will have an updated screenshot for the next two series, but I did want to point that out.
Yes, and also First Republican State Farm, too. The investors on that first series very picky when it comes to municipal credit. They do very detailed analysis and typically do not invest in most of the municipal bonds that come into market. So really kind of a testimony to the, the district's credit. But also here on this slide for that first series, two thousand sixteen, we also wanted to detail some of the, the secondary market trades. I think the secondary market is really driven by a number of factors post-sale, right? We have market participants, coupon structure, market conditions. But it's really healthy to have a vibrant secondary market. Because when investors know that they can sell their bonds in a liquid market, that makes them more likely to participate in the sale. And more participation leads to that oversubscription that we saw, that two times oversubscription, which allows us to lower yields even further. Where an illiquid market, if investors are not able to sell their bonds, then very few trades can impact the market and lead to disjointed pricing or higher prices in the end. So it's good to have a secondary market in the bonds. We see here in this two thousand sixteen series, just one maturity there. Trade, the two thousand forty-one's traded after the sale, immediate after the sale.
And just the, the last thing that we'll mention is really, how do we, how do we know, you know, as we're engage, engaging with district staff through this process that we, that we hit the lowest possible borrowing cost? You know, what's our frame of reference? That from KNN's lens, that's, that's a key focal point. And so we look at data from other highly rated California G O bonds and how they priced relative to the municipal market data index. And that's what's shown here at the bottom is what we would consider comparable deals that priced in and around the same time as Redwood City's series A bonds. And so included in here is Midpen, which from a geographical standpoint is, is right here in the neighborhood. Although it is a different credit, it's a, a natural triple A, triple A. So it is considered a higher credit quality than Redwood City School District. But we've included that just from a benchmark perspective and, and seeing can we hit close to those marks? And you could see relative to where the MMD spread for Redwood City is relative to Midpen, we're literally right on top of them to a natural triple A, triple A rated district. We also have included Long Beach Community College District, which has the exact same ratings as Redwood City School District and priced on the exact same day. And you could see we priced with tighter spreads than them in every maturity of comparable coupons. And that's reflected there in the gray dots. We've also included Southwestern CCD, which is further down the state, also exact same rating. Also in the market, just the week before, the Redwood City School District series A bonds were sold. And again, in all like maturities where there are similar coupons, Redwood City School District was able to secure tighter spreads. Now really what that means? Now, really what that means is it's really the collaboration. It's we're getting proposals from Stiefel. We're evaluating compared to market data. We're coming back to them with suggestions on being either more aggressive or moving the structure around. And through that collaboration, we're able to see results like this where you have of the of all of the deals, the California geo bond deals that priced in around that time, we priced very favorable to them. And so we believe that we were on the most aggressive side of the pricing process. And so just it's a little bit in the sausage making that I, but I wanted to bring that to the board because there is this process that unless you go through it, it's hard to understand. So we're doing our best to kind of capture the key elements of it here through this presentation. And I think we can be a little bit quicker through series B and series C, but hopefully through that explanation, it helps to describe that pricing process.
That's right. So for series B in two thousand and eighteen, we undertook a similar effort to series A. Again, going to Moody's and Fitch for the district's rating. The district was able to have their ratings affirmed at a very strong level, the double A two and triple A from Fitch. And you know, despite this being a very different interest rate environment, as Marcus described, we were able to leverage the the investor base that was established from series A and use that as a stepping stone to further grow that investor base in series B. And Marcus can talk about that on the next slide.
Great. And so for the two thousand and eighteen B, we, you can see here, we finally upgraded or the industry upgraded to the new I preo order monitor screen. So very flashy down there. And so in this transaction, again, district received one hundred and eighty three million in orders total for the sixty seven million in par, which led to this oversubscription of two point seven times. And again, because we had more orders than bonds, we could go back to those investors and say, hey, would you accept these bonds at a lower interest rate? Because there's more demand for them, you're going to have to compete for them. So we were able to do this because of this oversubscription and lower yields by five to twelve basis points compared to where we released in the morning or the preliminary pricing. You can see here, we added a number of different investors to the transaction, notably Vanguard, Eaton Vance, Goldman Sachs Asset Management. I'd say three of three of some of the biggest bond buyers in the market. Also, you can see retail participation here increased to three point six three percent. And I'd say most of that really driven by the interest rate environment. So you know, individual, you know, investors, you know, tend to invest when interest rates are high. And when interest rates are lower, they let, you know, a Franklin Templeton or a Vanguard manage their money and their more liquid funds compared to buying an individual municipal bond. So during that higher interest rate environment, we saw retail really kind of participate in the transaction here.
Marcus, do you want to mention the priority of orders in terms of retail orders that come in?
Yeah, absolutely. So retail orders are filled on a priority basis. So when we get an individual retail order, say for twenty five thousand bonds in the first maturity, two thousand and nineteen, we will fill that individual retail order ahead of a Vanguard or a Goldman Sachs Asset Management.
And again, just kind of looking at the performance relative to other deals that were in the market around the same time as reflected on the graph, we're looking again at spreads to MMD. MMD reflective of where the highest tax exempt municipal bonds are selling that particular time and the spread relative. So Redwood City, again, right in the mix of things, we've included in green Los Angeles Unified, which sold about a month earlier, but we thought just relative to not only the credit rating, but LA Unified, everyone has kind of a sense of who they are and where they are largest school district in the nation. And you could see where Redwood City's spreads ended up relative to LA USD. And I think that LA USD certainly one of the most liquid names out there. And then you see other highly rated districts, which some actually holding higher credit quality ratings by one notch or so than Redwood City and still being right in there in terms of spread. So again, these are data points, factual data points that we're looking at relative to where we ended up on a pricing basis on the day of sale and where someone else with that has a holds a very similar credit profile and selling a similar amount of bonds, same types of bonds where they ended up. And that gives us a peace of mind of knowing that we price these bonds appropriately based on market conditions at the time of sale. And then lastly, a series C, which I think we can kind of get through pretty quickly, maybe mention that we just went with the one rate.
Yeah, I think the the one thing I'll highlight is that we did approach the rating strategy a little bit differently for series C. Given a few factors, one, the interest rate environment, two thousand and nineteen, we saw interest rates decline consistently throughout the year. We were at historic lows at the time the district accessed the market, number one. Number two, the district, the the way that the transaction was structured into three different tranches, smaller par amounts and shorter term. And based on our experience working with other school districts at the time, we felt that the district could use just the one rating, save on costs and not compromise investor participation and the overall cost of borrowing for the district.
So I I think without going through the detail of the of the specific investors, the idea is is that there was a continued trend of building a broader base of investors. And you know, a lot of that was achieved through a robust marketing effort as has been described by both Marcus and Erica and certainly was the case for series C as well. Again, there were oversubscriptions. All the while, there were certain maturities with unsold balances. You know, that was not in common, given where the market was at in the time. And so there was a little bit more work to actually find an investor that would come in at the aggressive pricing levels. All the while, Stiefel was stepping up to underwrite any unsold balances at the end of the day. So the series C bonds could be effectuated and priced on the day of sale instead of pulling back. That is certainly one of the considering benefits of a negotiated sale is to have your underwriter step up and underwrite any unsold balances. And again, we show the comps at the bottom. There's two graphs this time because there was two notable differentiations between the bonds sold. There was a block of taxable bonds and tax exempt. Again, you can see Redwood City priced very favorably on the tax exempt. Your neighbors to the north there in Burlingame sold bonds right around the same time, actually carry a rating one notch higher. And you can see in a majority of maturities, Redwood City actually priced with tighter spreads than Burlingame. And again, that speaks to pre-marketing and a building effort through the course of this Measure T program. The taxable series was priced right in line with other comparable credit quality deals. And then at the top right, you know, there's just a reflection of two maturities that sold in the secondary market in days following the sale. Not sure if there's any questions on any of this, but we're happy to answer at the end. And so lastly, just to really wrap up some of the key highlights. When I look at Measure T, most notably, there were estimates that were included in the ballot language that was presented to voters at the time they considered it in two thousand and fifteen. At that time, the average tax rate was reflected at thirty dollars with a total repayment for the hundred and ninety three dollars reflected at four hundred and twelve million, eight hundred and four thousand, two hundred and twenty nine. At the end of the day, the average tax weight, tax rate for Measure T is projected to be closer to twenty dollars per hundred thousand of assessed value, so nearly ten dollars less than what we asked voters for. And a total repayment, the actual repayment of Measure T bonds is going to be over a hundred million dollars less than what was included in the ballot language, largely because of a shortened repayment term and significantly lower interest rates than we than were estimated at the time Measure T was planned and developed and and presented to voters. Additionally, the the credit profile for the district prior to Measure T, there was a single rating from SMP. And while A plus is a strong rating, it was below what we believe the credit quality of Redwood City School District is at. And through diligent effort and John can attest, going and presenting in person a robust presentation to each of these rating agencies, we were able to secure significantly higher credit ratings through the Measure T program. And we do believe with Measure S and the community funded or basic aid funded status of the district that there might be opportunities to actually build on this credit profile for the future. So with that, I think we can conclude our presentation. Listed below is just the robust list of investors that have participated in Measure T as described through the course of the presentation. Now, that was a lot. Pause there.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from board members?
I just wanted to say thank you very much and thank you for getting this on the board agenda ahead of time. I know sometimes there's a scramble when we have speakers and it was nice to have the weekend to review everything ahead of time. And then, of course, you did a great job presenting it here as well. So thank you. And I just want to say I'm I'm very, you know, proud of the work that we did with Measure T. I think the financing was really good. It's, you know, you sort of went over the high level summary of all of that. But having watched it as a board member, I mean, I remember the excitement, particularly, we were talking about that, just the excitement of that, particularly that first series. You know, it felt like the bells are going off and everything and you're watching things come in. So anyway, you know, I I have confidence that I think this next round with Measure S, I mean, I think we have shown that we're doing a good job. You know, we've presented the projects that we promised the community. We've done those. We've been paying back what we need to pay back. And so hopefully we'll have another good rating and another good round. So it was, I think it's a good, it was good for us as board members and also just the community at large, those who are watching and those that might watch the recording, just to sort of remind ourselves what we did with Measure T. Because there have been questions like, well, kind of what's next? Like the taxpayers, not the taxpayers, the voters, some of whom were taxpayers and, well, they're all taxpayers, I guess, in some regard. But anyway, the voters approved Measure S. And so there's been some questions about, okay, kind of what's next? So I think we could say that'll be kind of a similar sorts of things we can look forward to for Measure S. So anyway, thank you. Appreciate it.
Go ahead, Chris. Come up to the podium for our communication.
Thank you. So I did have a few comments. Obviously, the board has a fiduciary obligation to the taxpayers. I don't believe KNN, they have a fiduciary obligation to you, not to the taxpayers. So with that said, the first comment I have, and I did forward everybody, you know, the Wall Street Journal article where there's some concern, there was some current concern expressed with KNN having bonds that where they were sold through the under, the underwriter sells the bonds to some initial investors and then they subsequently sold, you know, a matter of days later and some, you know, investors make a lot of money. Obviously, that's on the backs of taxpayers. So I think the the issue with that is really, and I forwarded this to Lisa and John earlier this afternoon. When you look at a negotiated versus a competitive sales process, that's where that can potentially be introduced. And I think in a negotiated, as you probably know, is when the underwriter is selected to purchase the bonds and then resells those bonds, whereas a competitive process, the bonds are advertised to broker, the to broker dealers and the lowest interest rate wins, period. So competitive yields with competitive sales process yields a better outcome. So I would urge you to consider that. There's, you know, quite a few number of of these bonds that are done using a competitive sales process and not a negotiated approach. And second point is, I hope you'll look at minimizing unnecessary fees and I'm not a muni bond person, but there's, you know, with two hundred and ninety eight million dollars of these bonds, there's the the key point is this is secured by twenty nine billion with a B dollars of property in Redwood City, right? This this stuff is ironclad. The investors are going to get paid back. This is to me personally, and I invest a lot in muni bonds. A this is as safe as a treasury bill because unless all the twenty nine billion dollars of of land against which this is secured, because this is a lien against my house and everybody else's house, that unless it goes to zero, these these investors are going to get paid back. So with that said, and it's in the California constitution. So is there really a need to spend money on bond insurance, right? Again, keep in mind, this could be used to reduce to all the things on that bond list, right? Do we really need to get bond insurance? Do we really need to be spending money on rating agency fees? And I realize there's a balance because you want to get the lowest yield and do you need that to get the yield? But but those are questions when it's marketed and people know, like smart investors know that this is ironclad, you're going to get your money back. It's as safe as anything. So think about those things, those fees that add up a lot. The third point is combining districts, and I think Blake mentioned this, which is absolutely true. Liquidity, the the more liquid the investments, the lower interest rate you have to pay, and the lower interest rate the taxpayers have to pay. So why not combine the two? This gets back to my, you know, Sequoia uses ISM and, you know, we have two different sets of advisors. If it's a bigger district, there's more liquidity and you can get a better rate. I don't know if I'm out of time. I have comments. I can keep going on the next one. Seven seconds. I will do the rest on the after on Measure S because it kind of pertains to that. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. I don't know, Mike, if you have any questions or comments. I can't see.
No, I just thank you for the presentation. It was good to run through all of it because I wasn't here for the Measure T financing. So it was nice to to hear some of that. And you know, you know, may maybe maybe it is worth actually asking Blake to talk a little bit about negotiated versus competitive offering so that we can, we can sort of hear the differences from it and why. Generally speaking, I think school districts do go the negotiated route. But it'd be be interesting to hear from him as well.
Yeah, I know. Happy to. It is a conversation that really really has stood the test of time and there's proponents of both methods of sale. I would say in California, there's certainly the majority that use negotiated sale. Really at the onset, just going back to to this specific discussion for Redwood City School District at the onset of Measure T, I had presented materials in regards to method of sale and I described some of the pros and cons that each method of sale offer. There is, just generally speaking, to address Mike's question, in a competitive sale environment, you you're you're right, you're 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 advertising the bonds to any and every underwriter that's out there. And you're going to select the one that offers the lowest rate. Some of the 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 cons against securing the lowest rate is the the ability to pre-market and really control market timing and structure. And so you're getting the best rate based on what you think the market wants. But that is a big question mark that is helped to be neutralized through a negotiated sale. So a again, a highly rated school district in California, Redwood City School District certainly fits that bill. I think you would have success at either approach, either method of sale. You know, I think that what we heard tonight through the course of the Measure T program is an investor base that has continuously grown and built and resulted in oversubscriptions, which has allowed us to reduce yields and actually price through comparable issuers that were in the market around the same time. And so that storyline to me suggests that through a robust pre-marketing effort that has really been spearheaded by Stiefel, I felt they've been doing a a great job for the district. And as a result, the pricing has allowed us to price better than a district that in theory should be pricing more aggressively than Redwood City. Burlingame back on that two thousand and eighteen transaction, I want to say certainly fits that bill. How higher rated district going out with the same kind of bonds? Why did we price better than them? I think that that tells that story. So hopefully that just gives a a general idea of of how each works. I would be happy to come back and present a similar presentation that I I would be happy to come back and present a similar presentation that I did at the onset regarding method of sale. If there's an interest, it would just go into more in-depth discussion.
Great, thank you. And again, also thank you for the presentation. I do want to say thank you to the three of you for team effort, obviously, from the marketing, the pricing to actually making a successful sale of the bonds, which again make Redwood City look great. So I do really appreciate your effort as a team. Thank you. And moving on with the agenda, 14.1, which is was moved, and that is the resolution 24 authorizing the issuance of sale and general obligation bonds 2022 election 2023 Series A of the district and authorizing order other documents and related actions.
Good evening, members of the board. As succinctly put, this is the resolution authorizing Series A of the Measure S bonds that were approved by voters in November of 2022. Along with the resolution is the preliminary official statement and the bond purchase agreement for consideration tonight. We do have our friends from KNN and Stifle here. If there are specific questions about either one of those items or if there's just general questions moving forward.
And I believe we do have oral communication as well from Chris.
Thank you. So a couple of points. One is, I guess I would like to know the amount of the float. I know it's in the bond document. If I remember, it's, I think it's 60 million. But whatever it is, how did that amount get decided? Were there projects identified specifically for this first phase? You know, I haven't seen a board discussion about that. So I don't know where that happens. Maybe this is this bond subcommittee that nobody's seen reports from. But anyway, that would be important to understand the projects tied to the first tranche. The second question I observation I had from reading the material, I believe it talked about at the end of 4.21% rate, you know, a yield for, I don't know if that's a yield to maturity or you're yield to call, but I'm any, I'm assuming it's yield to maturity. But which seems like a very attractive rate for investors. And honestly, right? I mean, I that if you're in the 28% federal tax bracket and 9% state, just to pick a number, that's equivalent to getting 6.71% on a taxable CD or something, which is pretty hard to find, right? So you know, good for taxpayers and you can make your judgment about the other. I mean, I you see Berkeley, this is a data point yesterday floated bonds for 21 year bond, 5% coupon, yield to maturity 4.06%. So that's 15 basis points lower than what was in this, what you're reviewing than the Measure S bonds. And I would argue the Redwood City bonds are actually safer because again, they're backed by the 20, the the billion to $29 billion of the property in in Redwood City versus the Berkeley susceptible to strikes, changes in laws, changes in tuition, you know, it's not backed by property. So it's, I don't think it's as secure and they're yet they're paying investors less, the investors for that are getting less money than what we're talking about here, which is a safer investment. So anyway, I think that's a very attractive yield. The other comment, to the extent it is, you know, and taxpayers can take advantage of both sides, they're they're unfortunately, they're getting taxed. But maybe as an investor like me, if you can invest in it and get that, that's great. I would, my only question is, and I understand that is possible, working contacting Stifle directly. And I think this should be should be marketed to the community. Is I hope that this is like the initial offering price, like with the state of California, where all of their bonds, which it does for all of their bonds, the it's at offering price and there's no brokerage fee. And I don't know if that's the case with these, but I'd be interested to know that answer as well. And if so, then I would think that should be marketed aggressively to on next door, whatever, whatever to to our Redwood City taxpayer community. Thank you.
Thank you. So can I please get a motion to approve 14.1, which is adoption of the resolution number 24?
Moved to approve.
Second. Welcome, please. Trustee Weekly.
Hi.
Trustee McAvoy.
I.
Trustee Walz.
Hi.
Vice President Lawson.
Hi.
President Marcus.
Hi.
Moving on with item 12.2, single plan for student achievement for Orion and top to community schools.
So this evening, we're going to start with Orion, which will also be discussing the single plan for improvement. And we have Ms. Catherine Rivera, who is the principal and Catherine, I will have you introduce your others.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Baker, and welcome trustees and and district officials. I'm Catherine Rivera. I'm the principal of Orion Alternative School. And I'd like to introduce my two colleagues here who are here to share our work as a collective this this evening. Mrs. Winnie Wong is assistant principal. And Mrs. Brianna Turner is our MTSS TOSA. You'll get to know them a little bit more as we are going to take turns and rotate through our board presentation tonight. I'm going to start off with just saying Orion Alternative School is one of our school of choice schools here in Redwood City and home to two unique and innovative programs. We have our Mandarin immersion program as well as our parent co-op program. So parents join our program at our school with the intent of joining one of our wonderful programs. We're going to start off with our first goal, goal one, Redwood City Board District goal of suspensions and attendance. So starting off looking at our suspension data points. And these are targets directly out of our SIPSA. And you can see pretty low targets. And I think across Redwood City, I think we should all be pretty proud as we've seen our suspensions decline over the years here in Redwood City School District and Orion Alternative. So strategies, you could see heavy on tier one strategies because we believe that the first instruction is the most important. And we're really looking at teaching, learning and developing skills in order for all of us to collaborate and work together at one school. So we really focus on our core values. We have five core values that were developed over a two-year period of time. That was in collaboration with our community cross both programs with parents, with our students and with staff. Our core values are respect, kind. So we want students and adults to demonstrate respect, being respectful behavior, being kind, inclusive, being resilient and learning with joy. So those are our five core values which we embody throughout our school day. We start off every week with our core values and introducing our core values and and doing some specific teaching, whether it's through videos or calling out students for their demonstrating core values. And so that's a big focus at our school. And then it also happens in our classrooms with our community circles. So all classrooms request both programs have community circles on a daily basis. Because what we really want to is for students to know that they belong in their classroom, that they belong at this school. And so creating that sense of belonging is is almost a sense of urgency for all of us at Orion School. We are lucky to have this year our MTSS TOSA full time, which has been a marvelous addition because it really helps us monitor and track data on individual level and that individual level then helps us refine our interventions and know exactly where we need to target our students and try different strategies if they're not successful. And we have our school psychologist who's on site and he is, does a lot of tier one intervention. So school psychologists do a lot of work. Specialized work in school assessments, working with our special education department. But he is also wonderful in providing general education strategies to all classrooms. So we really believe that starting with that tier one support for all students, so giving all kids access to resources and tools is what's really going to help develop that school culture and that sense of belonging. He goes into classrooms and models, not just restorative chats and restorative justice circles, so that teachers learn those skills that that we can all practice beyond just our mental health professionals. And he also teaches our students zones of regulation. So all students are learning these skills and these strategies in the classroom. Our mental health provider. Thank you for continuing to provide that mental health support. She is in all tier, all three tiers. But we really emphasize again, the tier one instruction of all students having access to mental health. And she does that on a regular basis by doing social emotional learning lessons within the classroom. And then she's out at lunch and recess reemphasizing those skills to all students. And then, of course, she also does our tier one and I mean, our tier two and our two, two, three, tier three supports through our data process, we identify students that would benefit from more services. And so you can see the different levels of support. And we all have a lot to learn because we all learn from our mental health professional. We all learn a lot from our school psychologists. So it's been a team effort. Right now I'm going to ask Mrs. Brianna Turner to come in, talk. So I just talked, I'm sorry, I just talked about all of our strategies. Sorry, I'll go back to the panorama results really quick. So we know that our results are 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 tier one, tier two and two, three are have been effective. We're looking at our climate survey. That's the panorama result survey. And I love that we do it two times a year now instead of just annually, so that we could look for progress within one school year. We have seen the increase in the percent of students who have a sense of belonging, student engagement and our positive school culture. So to see the it's single digit growth, 9%, 5%, 7% in different areas of how students are responding of how they feel at school. And then I talked a lot about how we are able to track our data as a collaborative team. And we look at that on a weekly basis to monitor the effectiveness of our strategies. And because we are seeing that the strategies are effective, we don't intend to change anything at this time, but we are monitoring our own monitoring of of strategies. Thank you, Brianna.
Good evening. So on our next slide, we see that we have a wide range of interventions and instruction in place to support consistent attendance amongst targeted subgroups at Orion School. And these universal supports at the tier one level include attendance data being screened across the school and any number or any students with a high number of tardies or excused or unexcused absences are flagged as we review our data. Myself, our office manager and our office assistant make up our school's attendance team that meets weekly to review attendance data schoolwide. Teachers also hold daily community circles to promote a sense of belonging in the classroom. Teachers, administrators and office staff also all work to engage with families each day at pickup and drop off. Our tier two supports are more targeted. During our weekly attendance team meetings, we reach out to families of students who have had a high number of absences or tardies during that week via phone, email, text message, or if possible, in-person meetings and check-ins as well. Sometimes these include school engagement support plans being put in place. We've also recently begun attendance campaigns for classes with a large number of chronically absent or tardy students. And during these campaigns, we work to communicate with families one-on-one regarding their child's attendance as well as the importance of being at school on time each day. And our tier three supports are our highest level of intervention. These include student study team meetings where we address attendance concerns and brainstorm supports for the families. SARB hearings and collaboration with our district parent liaison also occur at this tier three level. And on our next slide, we can see that we continue to make progress in this area. Our current edu climber data, which is how we track our attendance data shows that these subgroups have increased attendance throughout the year. The data indicates that our second grade students have a 92.4% full day attendance rate. Our fifth grade students have a 93.6% full day attendance rate. And our Latinx student population has a full day attendance rate of 90.3%. So the direct communication that we have with families via letters, emails, phone calls and text messages throughout the week, as well as our in-person meetings all have hugely contributed to supporting more consistent attendance within these subgroups this year. While our data indicates that our interventions are benefiting many students in these targeted subgroups, we know that some families have multiple life challenges that are a barrier to school attendance, including housing, transportation and immigration. Despite high effort from multiple staff members, the most challenging truant cases often show little change in attendance, but we do consistently check in and meet with these families and we do know that they are trying their best. Moving forward, we will continue to offer all available supports to our most chronically absent and tardy students. And we will prioritize academic support for students who are demonstrating improved attendance.
Thank you, Brianna. Right. So goal two is our reclassification data and our EL English learner LPAC growth. And so we are looking at specifics, grade level groups as our target groups in our SIPSA this year, targeting second and fifth grade. And we could see early on our number of students specifically that we're going to reclassify, actually just reclassified a couple of weeks ago. And that was in just late January. So we saw and the LPAC scores coming into the school year from last year that we had five of our fifth graders who are English learners, meeting a preliminary criteria of reaching four on the LPAC. And then, of course, mid secondary criteria from I ready growth or other measured reading assessments. And then we saw one of our second graders. And next year I anticipate, although it's not in there, next year I anticipate a lot more students in that are eligible to reclassify. When I look at our numbers right now, we have 17 of our fourth graders who are at level three in our LPAC scores from last year. And with our strategies for this year, I anticipate moving all or nearly all of our fourth graders who are at level three into level four as well as our six fifth graders who are at level three and going on to middle school with the instruction that they're receiving this year and into next year in middle school. Also reaching level four with the preliminary criteria for reclassification. So our strategies, it continued in our partnership with National Urban Alliance coaching and mentorship. You'll see the strategy mentioned in multiple goals. Monitoring our EL progress through elevation. ELD targeted instructional groupings, and that is in the classroom. So teachers pull students in targeted groupings based on their English learner or their LPAC levels as well as format of assessment data in their classrooms. Continuing with Serato early academic language instruction and our integrated unit training. So we participate in grades K through third with our integrated unit planning with our coaches and teachers receive ongoing professional development throughout the year. And then LPAC test prep has begun because our LPAC testing is coming up next month, late next month and through the month of April. So just preparing our students for the strategies that they're going to come across in the LPAC test coming up at the end of March. You can see our tier two is collaboration again with Mrs. Turner, reading specialist and general education teachers to target specific growth and ELD. Because students need different things in their language development. Some of them need more emphasis on speaking and listening. And especially for our students who are our long-term ELS, more of their challenges are in the writing domain and needing more support in growth in specific language structures and syntax and grammar. And overall vocabulary development for all of our levels of language learners. Near and tier two is also additional ELD targeted ELD, that's a pullout. So most of it is push in within classrooms, but depending upon the grade level and targeted students are receiving pullout ELD. And then tier three, let's see, our resource specialist teachers working with students through their IEPs for English learners. And those are two of our students specifically that are receiving specific ELD instruction during resource pullout time. So talking about our strategies and what which ones are effective. We are believe our our NUAS coaching and modeling is effective and all of the, all of our coaching, you cannot, I cannot say enough for instructional coaching as an excellent model for improving outcomes for students. Direct coaching for teachers in the classroom with feed consistent feedback. I believe improves outcomes for students because when teachers have more skillsets that they can apply in the classroom and have somebody else sharing their progress, it's just like for students getting feedback helps in professional growth. So we knew coming in our fifth grader, we knew that our strategies that we had started last year and continue to share this year were effective because our five fifth graders that we were identified and on the LPAC from last year all were reclassified. And we are considering changing the pullout from the classroom to a push-in model. So that's just a consideration. We have, it doesn't have a long enough time yet to monitor it. It just So that's just a consideration. We have, it doesn't have a long enough time yet to monitor it. It just started a few weeks ago. So that's something to be monitored. And now goal three are very meaty ones. I'd like to have, have Mrs. Winnie Wong talk about goal three.
Yeah, thank you, Principal Catherine. Uh, goal three is to support students to progress toward a goal of making at least one year's growth in, in ELA and math. For, for each year of enrollment using I-Ready and CASP assessment to measure. Our students take I-Ready assessments three times a year while grade three to five students take CASP assessment at the end of a school year. Next slide, please. So reflecting on our twenty twenty-two achievement, in spring twenty twenty-two, we met our on or above grade level goal in an I-Ready ELA assessment as a school. With grade one and two students meeting the grade level specific goals from the previous year. Despite the challenges brought on by the worldwide pandemic, we recognize the opportunity and the need for additional support to help grade three to five students achieve their grade level goals in an I-Ready ELA assessment. Next slide, please. In I-Ready Math, I want to celebrate that we met our overall I-Ready goal as a school with almost all grade level meeting their respective grade level goals in spring twenty twenty-two. So good job, Orion team. Yeah, after reviewing the data with our school side council, we collaborated to set higher goal for this year and develop a site plan for twenty twenty-three based on the twenty twenty-two data. And we feel confident about our new goal. Uh, next slide, please. So in the next two slides, you can see our CASP goal for twenty twenty-three. It was our students' first year taking a CASP, math and ELA assessment last year after the pandemic. We set our goal for twenty twenty-three school year based on last year's baseline data. Can you go to the next slide, please? And the next one. Uh, thank you. I want to highlight the key strategy that have contributed to the significant improvement in our students' math performance. And we believe that these strategies have also shown the potential to enhance our students' English language skills. And we are committed as a team to continuing our implementation to further support our students' success. So starting, um, yeah, with the first one. In addition to the NUAPDs and onsite coaching, our teacher participate in SEAL Integrated Unit PDs and coaching as mentioned by Principal Catherine in the previous slide. I want to highlight that consistent and ongoing onsite math coaching is crucial to ensure the school-wide implementation of effective and high-quality tier one instruction for all students and building teacher capacity. Our teacher receive regular professional development and support from our onsite math coach, including collaborative data analysis, planning, demo teaching, co-teaching and constructive feedback. Our teachers are also leaders in our school-wide math PLC. They have even recorded their own lesson to be shared with their colleagues and encourage ongoing learning and growth mindset. This is not just a one-year magic. This is a four-year effort and it is a team effort with all the Orion staff. Next is the high quality, high-quality curriculum. We use Eureka Math as our supplement instructional material for math instruction. It is a well-designed and rigorous math curriculum that align with the state standards and meeting all students' learning need. And I know that the math committee is also, uh, right now piloting on Eureka Math as one of the option to be considered for next year. Um, moving on to differentiated small group instruction. Our teacher analyzed I-Ready Math and ELA data to identify student strengths and areas for growth. They pulled targeted mini lesson and activities from I-Ready Resource Library to provide targeted instruction to not only support, but also challenge our students appropriately. Our students also work on customized I-Ready lessons or assigned lesson by teachers. And talking about MIPD and it's like, oh, what, how, how could Mandarin Immersion Development support English language development? Our Mandarin Immersion teacher attended professional development session and received ongoing onsite coaching specifically focused on Mandarin language art. The training is really similar to the ELA SEAL and math coaching with its focus on providing teacher with the tool and the skills they need to effectively teach Mandarin to our students. The literacy skills our students acquire in the Mandarin classes can also, such as reading and writing, are transferable to their English language skills as well. So by focusing on improving Mandarin language art instruction, we are not only encouraging our students. Uh, sorry, enhancing our students' Mandarin proficiency, but also supporting the overall literacy development, which is really critical for the success in all subjects. And our MI consultant is here tonight to support our program and our school. Moving down to kindergarten and first grade, our teacher, kindergarten and first grade teacher are collaborating with the RCSD staff development team to review and select additional foundational reading material for our kindergarten and first grade students. Our Orion teachers are very busy. They also attend the false science PD three times a year, including instructional rounds. We have done two rounds so far. Boss trainer works with our teachers to focus on making science learning fun and meaningful to all students who hands-on inquiry-based activity. She also collaborated with our teachers to use science notebook to support English language learning. For example, by regularly recording observation and writing description of scientific phenomena in their notebooks. Our student can develop their critical thinking skill, academic vocabulary and descriptive writing skills. These can help them better express themselves in English and communicate their idea more effectively. Last but not least for tier one, the impact of STEAM integrated learning on both math and ELA learning is significant. And our STEAM integrated learning is not a standalone program. It's not like you drop off your student and then you go. And our STEAM instruction, um, integrated instruction integrate several subject to base, uh, project-based learning experience that allows students to apply what they are learning in the classroom to solve real-world problems and challenges. Our teachers actively collaborate with our STEAM TOSA to plan for STEAM integrated project and activities. These can help to make learning more engaging and relevant to our students, increasing their motivation and interest. Moving on to tier two, we have very robust a reading and math intervention program in a poem model. So thanks to our MTSS TOSA, she created a systematic and ongoing in-house data tracking dashboard to measure student growth in a six-week cycle. This dashboard can help administrators, teachers, MTSS TOSA interventionists to visualize students' progress over time and provide insight into their strength and areas for growth. Consistent and effective tier-two intervention is an extra dose to support student's success. But our current challenge, not everything is perfect. Our current challenge is adequate staffing. So we are, we really appreciate, um, the board to support and provide resources to, uh, for, uh, reading interventionist and math interventionist. But due to the lack of substitute teachers, our previous math interventionist has to cancel multiple times to fill in for other urgent position. And now she has moved on to a position that, uh, with even higher need. So in February this month, our STEAM TOSA started to provide math intervention to our grade one to two students. Followed by math and ELA interventionist, uh, intervention, we have a health, healthy city tutoring. Our student will participate in this after-school tutoring, uh, in a one-on-one setting to, um, to receive more targeted support. And for tier three, our resource, uh, resource teacher, um, also work with our students to provide one-on-one reading intervention and, uh, support according to their file for and IEP plan. So I want to take a moment to thank the Orion staff for their great work and their effort to support all the students. And good job. And then now I'm going to pass on to my principal Catherine as you share the effectiveness of the strategies.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Wong. So looking at instructional strategies that appear to be working. So, uh, we have found, looking at our data, um, that the students who have, um, a ninety percent attendance rate or higher are making the most growth when we look at the interventions, um, that we, that they're participating in. So we do, we are seeing a twelve percent growth, um, as measured by I-Ready for students who have ninety percent or higher of attendance. And when students fall into the chronically truant, which is below ninety percent. While they are making growth because they are at school, um, their growth is slower. So, um, of course we know that attendance is the key to success for all of our students. So changing, so for some of our smaller groups, we are considering doing more of a push-in model so that students are, um, a part of the classroom and not being pulled out as often to have that disjointed program where we see kids coming in and out of the classroom, um, because they, um, are getting the supports they need. But at times, um, the supports can then lead to students being pulled out during their tier-one instruction, which is something that we don't want them to lose out on. And so also we just, um, as Mrs. Wong mentioned, we are now implementing math intervention for grades one and two. With our STEAM TOSA who just reorganized his, um, STEAM, uh, instruction calendar or daily schedule to ensure that we're targeting grades one and two. So in conclusion, these are the pieces that we love the most. Are to be able to really show off what Orion Alternative is about with two unique programs on one campus. And we only have one slide because we could have filled those twenty-five slides. So we had to really pick and choose what we thought would really represent, um, the culture of two communities at our school. Um, and I started off including our librarian Christina and our library is such a, um, an important place for all students and a sense of belonging, um, not just during the regular library time, but library and Christina really extends the library during lunch, recess and after school to make sure that students, um, all have a place where they feel safe and they feel welcome during lunch and recess. And, um, so it's, it's such a hub of activity every single day. And she will find something for every student to do in the library, whether it's reading, whether it's hands-on games. Um, we're, we're proud that our families from Los Dichos, um, brought Hispanic heritage to the school this month. This month in September, um, and brought Aztecs dancers to celebrate Hispanic heritage with all of our students. And so that was, um, a wonderful celebration that included all of our families. And thanks to Brenda Del Rio for bringing the, uh, bringing the event, um, and celebrations and ongoing learning throughout the month of September and into October. The Mid-Autumn Festival, um, was celebrated, um, uh, in September with the entire community being invited, um, hosted by our Mandarin Immersion community. But all students, um, are participating, all families are welcome. Um, we got, we were invited, uh, we had the honor of having our mayor, uh, Mr. Jeff G. attend along with Dr. Baker in celebration of the Mid-Autumn Festival. And our Halloween, just showing off our great staff. The staff is the heart and soul of our school. It is the staff is what makes this school hum and makes all kids have that sense of belonging every single day. They go above and beyond all of the time, um, to try to reach every student and find that connection with every student. And they're just fun people. They're just fun people, um, that celebrate together across both programs and just recently celebrated a real fun baby shower for one of our beloved teachers soon to go on maternity leave. And November, the Author Illustrator Fair. It is started off as a decades-long tradition by Orion Alternative, previously on the Allerton Camp Campus. Um, and now has now developed into a school-wide celebration with authors representing multiple languages. Um, and having authors, uh, present in Mandarin, uh, for students in the Mandarin Immersion Program. So it was really awesome to just see, uh, that, that connection as we are becoming, um, this one community and learning to celebrate the unique elements of each program. And we have something unique called Classroom Buddies. That's one of our intentional, um, programming in order to, um, have students across, uh, across programs collaborate and learn about the unique elements of each, uh, program. Um, so we have Galen Osher's kindergarten and Mrs. Lem's third graders working on a STEAM activity in the classroom, but, and with Classroom Buddies. But the buddies get together on a regular basis across programs, um, to, uh, learn together and celebrate together. Family STEAM Festival hosted by, um, Mr. Brian Howell, our STEAM instructor, along with our amazing families. We have a family, uh, parents on our STEAM committee that, um, this is just one section of our cafeteria. It's kind of tight and it was, it was just a great hands-on event that was inclusive of everybody from the little toddlers all the way to the adults. And this, this is a huge event just recently, the Lunar New Year. This is actually not this year because I had turned in the board report before. So I had a copy picture from the year, the year prior. But Lunar New Year, really a celebration of Mandarin Immersion Program that welcomes the entire Redwood City community where we see our students from TK all the way up to middle school performing and it's, it's just an honor to attend and celebrate because not only are our students there, but you see the passion of our families. Really engaged in, in bringing forward, um, uh, the celebration of Lunar New Year. And, uh, we will be concluding our year with multicultural studies. So multicultural and parent co-op program happens throughout the year. We're really starting to pick up where, um, each, uh, class study is a different country. Um, and it's not just a surface level, but they use, they bring in the integrated unit and bring in the country of study that they're studying, for example, Egypt or Guatemala. Maybe they're going to study the water systems as part of the integrated unit, but they'll use study the water systems of that country. Um, or if they're looking at climate and climate change, um, they'll study that climate of the country that, 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 that classroom has chosen. And at the culminating event that showcases the countries, um, through a, a, a tour around the world happens at the end of May where our families from the parent co-op program, uh, host, but all students get to participate and celebrate because our goal, um, at Orion Alternative is for each unique program, um, to develop their own unique qualities. But for us to be able to celebrate across programs, what makes this program, this school so special. The student voice, uh, student voice, and then made a, uh, student voice. It was, it's so funny because we had to think, oh no, do we need to go do surveys? Oh, we're doing surveys all the time. We survey our kids all the time. We have our student leaders who are elected by their peers. Who, um, help us with surveys. And then we have some key student leaders who love to create surveys because they really want to know what their peers are thinking. And Mrs. Wong came up with this one, administrative daily field research at recess. Our students, um, we, we love that, that they have a strong voice, um, and they can write a really great persuasive essay to convince us and maybe of, of some, some special aspects that they'd like to see bring come to our school, whether it's on the menu. Whether it's something about their, um, play area or it's I-Ready. Why do we gotta do I-Ready again? Because they have strong voices. Um, so we, we do definitely every day out there, multiple times a day doing field research. As well, we have our mental health survey, um, by our mental health professionals, teacher surveys and, and student input for language enrichment activities. Again, they have a lot to say. And we have a lot of surveys that come out by administration to get the feel for what students want or what they're feeling. And of course their voice on our core values and mission and vision. And of course nutrition's on there. That's a big one. And if you read our panorama surveys, I think that's the number one word that you'll see as a result on panorama surveys, food, chocolate milk. So changes, uh, school-wide core values. So we developed our school, school-wide core values with our students. And they thought some of the original core values mentioned by the adults were kind of dumb. So we made it into more appropriate for what the students believed and what they wanted to receive represented in their school. Uh, student movement for food waste and reduction and increased school-wide recycling. So that was an initiative by our students. Uh, here's some very passionate students who feel very passionate about our, the climate change and reducing our carbon footprint. And so they are very active daily monitoring the quantity of food on a tally tracker of how many apples, bananas or oranges we are wasting. Um, and then sharing that with Sodexo, um, to let Sodexo know the preferred fruit. Um, and the less preferred fruit, um, sharing that. So Sodexo then follows back with us and says, you know, we can try to make these changes or due to shipping or current world markets, bananas are harder to get right now, um, which is the preferred fruit at Orion. And then developing, uh, club lunch. So our, uh, students get sharing with us what kind of clubs they want. And so with the recently, uh, a group of students introduced Beyblades. I didn't know what it was, but now I do. And now we have it, uh, Beyblades, uh, student club happening daily during lunchtime. And then parent outreach. I feel like I should say parent engagement, not outreach, because we have a very engaged, uh, community at Orion Alternative in both of our programs. We have, uh, for example, parent-led math and science enrichment. We have, for example, parent led math and science enrichment, as with parents on our STEAM committee. Redwood City Downtown Holiday Parade, again, I stole this one from the year before because it rained really hard this year. But both of our programs are out in December marching in the parade. Familias Unidas, which is a collaboration with the Familias Unidas NIF and Secundino. Suno family and both the program, parents from both programs are invited to attend Familias Unidas. And we had a really robust attendance this school year, and now we're moving into session two. What was wonderful is this year, the, the, the Suno family incorporated for Spanish speaking families in the Mandarin immersion program. Specific technology training and how to use the apps in our Mandarin immersion program for our Spanish speaking families. So that families could navigate those apps as well as Spanish speaking, apps for all of our families. We have a new father's group, Bro Ryan, Orion's dad group. Who provides refreshments at events. But also, we're very supportive of the annual camping trip. And when I've talked to a few parents about what are ways that we can really bring our two communities together to really celebrate and recognize and get to know each other. It was voiced from several families, the annual camping trip where children and parents have an opportunity to get to know each other, get to know their values. And really recognize everybody has something in common, we're just looking for maybe a different outcome. In, in our school in terms of language or a different focus, but we're all here for the same goal. We all want happy, healthy children who are thriving. And so the camping trip and Bro Ryan really helps bring that forward. Mrs Wong helped, didn't help, she led a parent literacy night for our families at the beginning of the year. That is for all families that welcome to get, help them introduce how they can help their students. Parents do not need to speak Mandarin, have any Mandarin skills in order to support their students in their Mandarin language development. Los Dichos is a program from Cornerstone. That is brings Spanish speaking families, culture and language into the classroom to collaborate with their teachers and other parents. They read a book together about values and morals and then do a hands on activity in the classroom. We have our wonderful garden that thanks to a garden grant and then our parent, very active parents rejuvenated our garden last year. And we have climate science, thanks to our PTO who fund our climate science program out in the garden. And monthly you will see our garden evolving, especially as spring's coming. And art in action, art in action across both programs where parents lead art in the classrooms. So concluding comments, I'm going to go down, I'm going to start at the bottom, go to the easy ones and I'm going to go up top. So how can the board of the district office continue to support the work at Orion? I'm going to start with the first one. Full funding for full time STEAM TOSA, big ask, but we have seen that hands on learning. That is integrated into the learning of the classroom and what students are doing in the classroom. Makes learning relevant and reaches all students. So we have students, we have newcomer students who are learning English for the first time. We have students in fourth grade reading at fifth and sixth grade reading level. And they all have an entry point into STEAM education because it is hands on, develops language. Requires collaboration, multiple iterations, kids get frustrated, learn to deal through frustration. And work through and know that they can have an end, end product representing something that they learned. So full time STEAM TOSA funding is a big ask and something that I think that the model that we have created at Orion. A year long model that integrates all units, is it something that I think the district can replicate across all schools? Share all of our resources, not our maker space, but share that planning document with everybody because it is quite comprehensive. And does reach the, it's the standards across all grade levels. Continue funding our mental health and reading specialists and a part time Mandarin language intervention teacher. To help reach those students who are not meeting our benchmarks in Mandarin language early on. So that we're not doing so much catch up and the older grades. Go up to the top, revisit the, the district proposed policy that was introduced about a year ago. Of one school of choice opportunity per child. Because we do have a big challenge at our school as a school of choice. And that is lower class sizes and the upper grades. So in the upper grades, three, four and five, we do see through attrition, a lower class sizes. And I, as the principal, my goal is to oversee the health and the wellbeing of the entire school. And while class, low class size is lovely to teach in and to learn in, and you get more individualized attention. The health of a, a long term health of any program with small class sizes, as I know in the past history of being here for twenty nine years. In the long term, it does not lead to longevity of any program. And it is not good for collaboration when you're only working with one teacher per grade level. And then you don't have that collaboration with a partner. And in addition, it is not as healthy for the students because they end up with the same students. Year after year, as opposed to having more rich experience with more classmates. So that is one request, this is me alone speaking and not speaking for the entire community, so this is just the principle. And the second one is, again, me, the principal speaking, this is not on behalf of the entire community. Considering making Orion Alternative a, a school for, as a neighborhood school. This does not mean anything about changing the parent co-op program. The beauty of the parent co-op program is parents are, are coming to the school because they want to be with other families who are volunteering actively in the school. But this would give the opportunity for more students to enroll in our school throughout the school year. For example, last year we had two smaller kindergarten classes. And school of choice is closed throughout the school year, so those classes did remain small. And then became one very large first grade class this school year. Then gives no opportunity for growth, but then ends up with one very large classroom. So that, having been a neighborhood school, I believe, would welcome our families who live in the neighborhood. We have a lot of families living near Whole Foods that this school would be close in walking distance to them. Wouldn't require them to travel as far, some of the families that used to go to Haws are going further distance. And we would love to welcome some neighborhood children who either may not know that Orion is an option for them. Because they don't are aware of the school of choice process. But just also to help with enrollment as we look at the older grades. So again, I'm speaking as my own personal opinion, and this does not represent the opinion of any of our family groups. And nor does it represent the staff, just I wanted to share my rationale as the leader of a school. When I have to look at the health and wellbeing of a school overall and long term and longevity. I think of having the enrollment of students is really important. Thank you.
Question.
Thank you. Obviously, you guys did a great job, but I will go ahead and let any other board members make any questions or comments and then I'll go left.
Yes, that's correct, Chris.
Okay, yes, so Chris Provo has a comment for item fourteen point one, I mean, I'm sorry, twelve point two.
Thank you. So my, my only comment on both Taft and Garfield, I wasn't looking at Orion so much, sorry, but I think it, there's, it applies there as well. I mean, I was stunned when I read the measure S, bond measure. You know, disclosure document for investors, right? That showed that average daily attendance is down, I thought it was down fifteen percent. But it's down over thirty percent in the past seven years from eight thousand four hundred to forty nine down to fifty nine twelve. So, you know, underscoring the, the concern about declining enrollment. And, and of course, we're building the new school, all these new schools, so creating capacity in buildings. So, and I, I mean, I'm just underscoring, you know, as you guys think about yet another bond measure in a couple of years, right? Which I know there's phase three coming, I mean, please, please think about. And if it was a parcel tax, you wouldn't see me, right? I, I would actually support a parcel tax because it, it, for, for the teachers and everything she just described is operating expense that she needs, right? Right, she's shaking her head, yes, and I bet you every principal here would say the same thing. They need lower class sizes, they need teachers, they need academic programs, I don't even know what TOSA means, but that sounds like something that's probably a human. So, you know, not a bit, not more concrete, right? And so, fix the hazardous roof, leasing asbestos and all the other things that Jay Hummer from Props and Measures, you know, claims. Even though the school accountability report card is stellar, good or exemplary. And the Taft building that's, that is one CBOC member pointed out is fallow, it's completely empty for some reason, I don't know the story there. But those scores were horrible, right? I mean, in terms of the percent of students meeting state standard, the goal is to get ten percent of third grade students to meet the standards. And at Garfield, zero percent of sixth grade students are currently meeting math standards and three percent are meeting reading standards. So if we didn't have measure T, would the percent meeting standard be negative? I don't know, I mean, so it's, it's so, you know, where are we, that, that's just, that's criminal, that is, that just, I mean, I was so sad to see that. And I don't live in that district, but I care about those kids and we need to figure out how to help the teachers. And the buildings are fine, so I'm just going to leave it at that. And I think I, whatever you guys can do to please the board, the board of trustees, you guys have a responsibility to the teachers. And I would hope that you're, I don't know what all the principals think, but I would think they would need teachers and, and resources and not more buildings, thank you.
Thank you, and then just to answer your question, a TOSA is a teacher on special assignment. Okay, so any comments, questions, their presentation? Mike, do you want to go first? I don't want to put you on the spot.
Yeah, sure, oh, far away, thank you, thank you Catherine for presenting and bringing along with, and Winnie and Brianna. And, and thanks to all the staff and everyone that works at Orion Alternative for the work that you do there. We've gotten, you know, a lot of, a lot of communication from parents from both programs and, and they always start with. How their child in that program is thriving, and so I think that's a testament to how, to the work that's going on there. I really, I missed all the core values, I was trying to write them down, but I, I definitely caught the last one, learn with joy. And I always remind myself as we're going through these SIPSA's and we're going through. The data and particularly, you know, we're still recovering from the effects of the pandemic on, on, on students, on our staff and everybody here. Learn with joy, and I'm glad that that's really right up there in the, in the core values and that's something that we always focus on. Our schools are building wonderful communities at them, Garfield, Taft. And Orion Alternative are all building wonderful communities there, and I think it's an important thing that we remember that. A SIPSA score doesn't tell you, sorry, an R E D I score does not tell you the quality of the school. It tells you the challenges that the school's facing and the support that we need to give it. And I, I really appreciate what, what, what everyone's doing. One thing I did want to ask about on the Orion presentation was that. A common theme that came through, and this is, this is true at all our schools, about just how attendance really needs to. When kids are attending school, that's where the better outcomes come from. And it was nice to hear the separation of the data and, and why that's so important. But one of the strategies on the suspension slide said that, you know, there's a lot of families, there's a lot of students that are just really struggling to even be able to make to school. And perhaps we should be shifting some of our effort towards the ones where we're actually making improvement for. And I can understand the reasoning there in that, but, but is there a safety net? Or is there something that's offered for, for those students that we're not just leaving them behind just because they're really struggling and facing challenges to get to school?
I appreciate that question, Mike, because it does, does sound like that in this, in the, in the, in the strategy in the SIPSA. I don't know where I'm, where should I be looking, I don't know, where did Mike go, where did Mike go? I'll talk to everybody in front. No, we're not, we're not abandoning the students, nor are we not implementing the strategies that we. We had mentioned in the, the different tiers and especially tier two and tier three. What we found ourselves doing in our weekly MTSS meetings was talking about probably the same five students for forty minutes. When we had another twenty students, which we really could have been focusing on to move the needle more. To really target a different set of students in our conversations and in our actions. And so while we're not, and some of the families have said, we've told you already, this is our, you know, kind of stop bugging us. We, this is our situation, this is what we need to help, and this is how you can help us. Some things we can help with and some things we honestly are beyond our scope and ability within the school. So we started targeting, started targeting other groups of students who we thought were lower hanging fruit. When we looked at our time and resources. So, no, they still, and in fact, some, we still talk about them, but they're not, and we still have actionable items around the families, but it's not that weekly, every week. So they are on our agenda, which Brianna does a fabulous job of keeping us on track on our agenda and making sure that we are monitoring students. But we are being more inclusive of who we are monitoring when we are looking at the attendance data and strategies. Our net is wider.
Great, thanks for, thanks for clarifying that, and thanks again for the presentation.
Thank you, Mike.
I would say it's, it's a really wonderful school, I've voted with my feet, I've voted with my children. Which is the most powerful vote I think you can give. And the reason why I serve here as a trustee is a way of saying thank you for the fine work. That you, the staff, the teachers do to educate the, the students on that side. So I just, I'm, I'm really, really grateful for the work that you do. I, I wanted to bring to folks attention, I happened to come across my second grader Max's homework. Which rather surprised me because it was talking about types of ants, A N Ts, automatic negative thoughts. This includes things like all or nothing thinking, thinking in absolute terms like always or never. For example, I never get picked to play kickball or fortune telling, thinking that the future will turn out badly, even though there is no evidence. For example, even if I study, I'll still fail the test, mind reading, she probably thinks I'm dumb. Magnification, if I'm late to the party, then everyone will leave me out and I'll never be invited to a party again. But this is amazing stuff, it's like, this goes on the list of things, like I wish kids were taught this stuff in school, but they never are. It's like, holy moly, but they are, this is incredible, so just, I was really moved by that, that I stumbled across that last week. So, so thanks for providing such amazing holistic education for, for the kids there. I had the same question that, that Mike did, and, and I do wonder like, if the data around the low attended students is that the existing interventions aren't working? And it feels like that's what we're hearing. Are there yet some other tools in the tool bag? We know, for instance, in evidence based studies that home visits are highly effective, like, so i- is that something that, that we consider? Just want to, want to put that out there. But yeah, just thank you so much for the presentation, thank you for the work that you do for, for our kids.
Thank you, trustee Wiggly.
Yeah, sure. All the same comments, thank you for your presentation, I think that, you know, we've heard, we've gotten a lot of emails from, you know, both the, the. Co-op and the MI parents, but what was resounding is how much each loved their program. And I think that's very clearly come through, so I think you're doing good work there. And I love seeing all the activities that you have going on, all the events that you're doing and including both programs in those. I thought it was wonderful to see the Mandarin presentation at the Author Illustrator Fair too, I think that's a great addition to that. Same comment about the, the absentee students and what we can do to get them back. Like David said, maybe home visits could work. They're not here, they're not learning, we all know that, so whatever we can do to get them back into the classroom. And I will stop there, I did, resounding here, the coaching is important, the N U A. I think that's fantastic that, that it's working and that the teachers appreciate it too. And I do want to say, I see a lot of your teachers in the audience, so thank you everyone for being here tonight.
Yeah, I also want to say thank you, and I was looking at the, the list of participants and attendees, and I, I think you have a lot of Orion. Staff and parents out there tonight, so hello to everybody. And I also wanted to say thank you so much for the presentation, I really appreciate all the work that all three of you are doing. And thank you to the, the teachers and the staff and the parents, it's pretty clear. How much family members are doing to make a lot of these things happen. I, I've been out to the school a number of times this year for the various events. And of course, we do hear a lot from Orion parents and families. Both email and phone calls and when I'm out there, and clearly the passion comes through, I mean, you, you know, and I. both email and phone calls and when I'm out there, and clearly the passion comes through. I mean, you, you know, and I often think like, you know, we're doing a good job when the students are happy and the parents are happy. And so thank you for for all that you're doing there. I did want to do a shout out specifically to the library and Christina. I've known her for years. She's been with our district for years and she does do an incredible job. She's so welcoming and inclusive. And it's such an important part of the campus, right? Can be a real hub for the kids and another place where the two different program communities can come together. So shout out to her and just all the offerings there at the library. And I know that the parents also really support that program through a lot of extras. So that's great. And then also shout out to all the professional development and the coaching that's going on at Orion. We definitely want to see that. And we know that sometimes things are optional. You know, we may have a stipend, but it's not a required sort of thing. And it sounds like at Orion, the teachers and staff are really taking advantage of those things. And we know that that translates into better teaching and learning for kids. So really great job and all of that. And I think my colleagues have covered some of the other things. I do appreciate your list of concluding remarks and like with the other principals and school sites, some of those are kind of longer, longer term thing. I mean, we're not going to address them tonight. You know what I mean? Like, hey, we're going to give you that and that and that. But but we certainly appreciate that. And there's some things that are sort of thematic for every school site. So it's important for us to hear that, particularly as we go into the budgeting cycle and the staffing cycle for next year. So thank you for addressing those. And then you have a couple of, you know, important sort of things that we need to be thinking about. So I'm sure that that'll get incorporated into conversations in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And again, of course, thank you. I do think that your personality is great. You are managing two different programs. So kudos to you for doing that. I think you're doing a great job. I mean, if we really think about it, we have really big schools with, you know, close to 700 students. Yes, there's still a lot of students, but it's still kind of one group you're dealing with too. And we, I'm sure appreciated as a board and you guys did great on the presentation. I really like on the tier one, the daily community circle. Because I do think, again, it's important to engage the students to actually have them feel at home. Because I mean, we are at school or at work more than sometimes we are at our own homes. So I think that's important. And then when we talk about kudos and shout outs to all the PD, obviously, you also mentioned, I believe it was the health, the mental health person. How she, I believe is a she. Even during lunchtime. So sometimes, you know, I was thinking as you were talking, that poor woman probably needs a mental health herself because then she's doing all these other things. But yet, at the same time, we also have to acknowledge the great teachers that we have, because they too probably don't even eat a good lunch, because sometimes students are in their class or they stay after class, after school, because someone needs help. And so again, big shout out to everyone. USS administrators and of course, teachers, because without them, students wouldn't learn. And let's see. The student voice, obviously, that's very important, because we do want to hear from the students. And when it comes to Familias Unidas, I thought it was great that you said there, I thought they're thinking outside of the box or actually being proactive and helping those Spanish speaking parents, I believe you said, to navigate the applications that they can use for the Mandarin program, which I think it's good, because we did hear from some of the parents that some of their kids are struggling. So I hope they feel that support and, you know, get better. And let's see, what else? I think that is it. Obviously, with the the attendance, you know, making progress, I think that's always going to be an issue. It had been probably a bigger one last year because of everyone being out sick and we're keeping our fingers crossed. I did see, if I'm not mistaken, all of the newsletters from all the other school sites as well. They talked about attendance as very important. And so hopefully, parents have gotten the message. And again, hoping the attendance will get better, because again, that helps the students. So I don't want to talk too much. I know that, you know, it's getting late, but I do really appreciate everyone. And again, everybody loves our school. Every school has its unique program. And so keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So Catherine, thank you so much for all you do and for all three of you for all you do. It is true, there are two programs on a school site. It's never been easy to have two programs on a school site, as Ms. Wolf can attest to also. I want to commend you all for moving forward with keeping the vision, making sure that everyone is respected, making sure that everyone treats each other well. And I'm talking the adults of the of the community. In receiving the many emails over the last week, I was shocked at what was going on. And Catherine, I know you had to leave. And even though she was gone, we were in constant communication. And I applaud you for your strength, your tenacity, to make sure that we're going to move forward. And for lack of a better way of saying it, the adults are going to play nice in the sandbox. So whatever you need in that regard, just know that we are here to support you. It has nothing to do with any of the administrators, MTSS people, coaches at the school site, the teachers, the teachers are amazing to hear that teachers are on emails and it's going around. It's just like, why? But we will support you and your staff to make sure that the trajectories go in the manner in which you have stated and make sure that all staff, teachers, office managers, yourself as administrators, are treated with respect as anyone should be. So just know that we are there to support you and everyone that works at that school site. I want to commend you, Mr. Howell's doing interventions. Mr. Howell was doing interventions a while back when he was at Henry Ford. Do you guys remember? You, I, but Janet and Elisa would remember when he was, I think, a second grade teacher at Ford. And before that, he was at Fair Oaks and doing some of the same thing. So you got him to do that? I applaud you. Very good. Very good. And all, it was a great presentation. Thank you all so much. And thank you for your tenacity and for not giving up. I really, really appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, trustees. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Baker. We appreciate it. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, Orion. Thank you.
Bro, Ryan.
Thank you.
Do you want to take a break, quick break? Yeah.
Okay, we're going to take a five minute break. So I think it's been five minutes. Thank you. Now, again, still on item 12.2, we're now going to hear from Taft Community School. Welcome.
Okay, do I have that on? Just making sure. Well, good evening, school board members, Dr. Baker, district parents, and of course, my staff, who I hope is online, is still awake at this time. And just to know, I have Elsa Spurro, who's going to my family coordinator, am here with me today. Unfortunately, Ms. Winn is in spirit here as she is homesick. So she's not able to attend, but I'm sure, I hope she's on. But we've been working hard together. So we are going to be reviewing our Taft data, just like our past predecessor and Ms. Ryan and all the schools. So you are familiar with our goals and what our three goals are for our school. And so I'd like to just get started as it's late. So on our first goal, of course, we're looking at our social emotional suspension and chronic absenteeism. I want to say last year, we did meet our goal for suspensions. I am a huge believer that suspensions are not something that work. We really need to figure out a system to help support our students. So I do do how in-house suspensions whenever necessary and a lot of communication with parents. My students know that when they come to the school office, they will be getting a phone call with the parent with me present. So it's some of the systems that we have with collaboration. I think because of that collaboration, our suspension really come down to a low because there's a lot of collaboration and communication with families, which is important. And so this year, we have a 1% and we've been able to meet that last year. And we hope to continue that this year as well. We have built a lot of systems in our place. We've talked a lot in the, on our team about what do we need to do, set in place to make our students feel safe. And so because of the safety issues that have come up in panoramic survey in the past several years, we've really built in strategies about what does it need, what do we need to have in our schools, our students are safe? So that we are being proactive to reduce suspensions, to review behaviors. So we have been working this year, we're working with Santa Clara PBIS, refining our PBIS documentation and structures and are looking at lessons across with our team. We are looking at a lot of, we had some, we were fortunate to have ESS do some trauma attune nature nurture heart training just recently with Dr. Mr. Antonio Prevez. And that was a great because our staff really became more aware of what some of the things, just minor things we have to do for our students who come to us with a lot of trauma. And so Taft has a lot of students with trauma. And so that's why we, we want to make sure we build in a lot of safety nets for our students. And if our students feel safe, then the academics will come. So we have put into place a trimester awards. We do this on not only trimester, but even monthly character traits are really trying to build our students and to be responsible citizens. It's something we've added this year, just really trying to build on what we're doing to build their character. We do a lot of social emotional learning. We work with our counselors. This year, we've been very fortunate to have our behavior specialist who's been working with our teachers and our students, especially in the in the classrooms where students had not been in school and it's been very, very difficult. So our behavior specialists have given tools and strategies to our teachers to really support our students, especially in our TKK and one classrooms, where students still are learning how to socialize. We've also had our mental health counselor. We have several, but we had to have our district liaison who with me, we started last year, we start, we started talking about what do we need to do to set in place into our school? Because counseling is one aspect. There's all this other aspect of what we need to do in our group. So we really started working on our social emotional learning. And what does that look like in a classroom? So this year, she has put together, along with her counselors, really pretty robust lessons that we've been put into place at the start of the year. So our counselors were doing lessons in all of the classrooms, about six of them, six, about six lessons. Some classrooms had more depending on the need and the student and with the teachers. And because of this, we have definitely seen the benefits of what's been happening outside our classroom. Again, social emotional learning, we're trying to build our students to be self advocates, be problem solvers. And really be, you know, citizens that are out there really trying to problem solve and support and create a safe environment. So through the mental health lessons that we've done, we've definitely seen a huge change in our environment outside. We also make sure that our families do self refer their own students when they need some mental health support, which is great because they know that we are there to support them. It's not just us teachers asking for support, but our families know that we have a system in place for their students. And so we, our family center is often access and self reported, parents are reporting their kids that they want to have them have mental health support as well. So those are just a few aspects of what we do. In the past, we've actually had garden club. Unfortunately, we don't have our garden, but we're trying to bring back our garden, at least in the portion. So one of our goals this next time was our mental health counselor last year started our garden club at lunchtime as well. So we're going to hopefully in the spring, start that up again. And so we have definitely gotten a grant for that to make sure we want our garden back that we got torn down with our beautiful new buildings. So we're hoping to be able to have a garden again in the near future. So for tier two, we have a number of things that we've put into place. We have, this year, we've been very fortunate to have Friends for Youth, a mentoring program for some of our fifth graders. As you know, fifth grade is, you know, as you're looking on to middle school, there's a lot of anxiety. There's a lot of things that they had, they are looking forward to, but a lot of things that make them very anxious. So we're really trying to support our students that really need some mentors. And so we've been very fortunate that they come weekly on campus. We have our social groups that we have at lunchtime or during the day. And we've been very, because our counselors are out in the classrooms at the start of the year, this year, we have a girls, a girls group that's called the Girl Empowerment. We have a boys group. We have a huge amount of boys who need or also wanting to be social in a social group. Believe it or not, our fourth and fifth grade boys, which I think is wonderful, because it's not only, we're taking away the aspect of that, it's not okay to be in a social group, that it's not getting a counseling, but it is, we're taking away those various for our students. And so they have a unique name of, that I didn't learn today, because they all get to name their groups. But it has to do with some Roblox thing. And it doesn't come to mind right now, but it's kind of funny because I was like, what is the name of your group? And so the boys decided to call their own name. And so I think it's great because it's just empowering them that this is okay to do and that we are working with them on different skills that they need. Especially because they're very competitive. So really trying to build on those social skills that they need that will help them be be successful in life. And so our mental health are constantly doing check ins. We have kids who even come and do check ins often with our counselors. That's how that's how, you know, that when the need is there, that's what they need, right? So we are do, they do, we do often have time, kids coming themselves to the off. I want to check in with my counselor. For tier three, we just do a lot of individual supports for our targeted students, our crisis support, safety plans that we have. We have those referring for specialized care. We have our behavior specialist who's writing bit plans to help with our student behaviors and working with us as well through our SST process. And then we do have a huge amount of newcomers. We've, we've had, so we have our newcomer screenings that are constantly teaching us about our families who are coming to this country. Our family center meets with them. We have our team of Artosa and Ms. Elsa that meet with them. And so we just gather a lot of information and trying to provide them the resources that we have here for our schools. And so to really support our families who sometimes have come to a different educational system. And so we really want them to know that we have a lot of resources here for them. So in terms of suspensions, like I said, we have a lot that we've been doing in the classroom, outside the classroom. We're really, really working on trying to target our student population and really making sure that they're aware of what's happening in the world as well. And we do know that we've been working because we haven't had, I have to say, and then I was in the month of January, usually by January, we start having behaviors. We had one behavior in January this year. In the month of February, we've had one, we've had one child multiple times. But really, it's in the past, we've had a lot of students. And so last year, when we came back from the pandemic, I was like, oh, my goodness, these kids don't know how to socialize. And we were seeing so many behaviors at the start of the year, where this year, because we put so much into place into social emotional learning, our behaviors in the office have decreased. And it's been great to see because we're teaching them problem solving skills through our social emotional learning. That has not to say that there's no issues because it's impossible. We're a school. But we're definitely always working on self advocacy with our students and teaching them how to mediate a problem and solution and coming up with our plans. So it's been great to see that the behaviors at school definitely have reduced. And it's also a very calming. It's nice to go outside at lunchtime and actually just socialize with kids and not solving problems. So it's been wonderful this year to see how everything has come together. In terms of strategies that don't work, I don't know that we have any that haven't worked because we've been doing so many. I can't even name which one is not because there's too many that come into play and every child has it. We have opportunities for children for whatever their needs are. And so every child needs a different thing, right? So we really have to be able to advocate what they are doing in our terms for and suspensions. But I do think that the one important thing is the communication with families. And we've been trying really hard even this year to try to build some family. It's correct to connect is what our mental health costs. It's so series of apparent engagement opportunities to parents to come in. So we do have a group of parents who come in once a month and do that. So we're really trying to build this so that we're building the skills of parents as well. And so we are hoping that we won't have any suspensions, but unfortunately, we are a school system. So we're hoping, I know we've already had one this year, but that'll be our 1%. So in terms of chronic absenteeism, just like all the schools, we also have our goals. It's been a very, very difficult. I was looking at all our data and looking at our long, long list of letters that go out, which is definitely an issue we've been having at all the schools, but I know at task specifically. we continue to have lots, um, our, when I was looking at our data and I was looking at how many children are there really specifically targeted with 20 or more absences? We have about 10% of our population. Because we send out these letters and I was looking at, okay, what's the next, what's the next group, right? So I'm looking at, okay, the next group is between 10 and 20. That's another 20%. So those are the considered really severely chronic students. So when we look at those chronic absenteeism, even on um, in the system, what it tells us is we have students that are tardy, that are still considered chronic absenteeism. And so for me, a student who's tardy is in school. I want them in school, we take them regardless, but they're considered chronic as well because they're chronic absent, even though they're present in school. So there's some things that we have to work on in terms of what are we doing for chronic absentee? I think it's one of the biggest challenges because although we have a lot of students that are sick, we still have students that have high anxiety. And I don't know if anyone has, we have some students, several students on the top of my list that we have high anxiety, that like parents are having lots of difficulty getting them to school. And so they're part of our chronic absenteeism. We have done home visits and we've been doing them. Um, but it's not working. So it's just trying to figure out what do we do for our students for our chronic absenteeism? Because we are putting a lot into attendance, we're sending home the information, we're recognizing monthly, I do monthly attendance for different grade levels. And believe it or not, our fifth graders are the best, they want to be in school. They're the ones that we have the best attendance in the entire school. So we get, they get trophies once a month, the grade levels, and then we have a K2 and a 3.5. Our fifth grade has been at the top almost every month. So we are doing those recognitions, we're all sending out letters. We're doing a lot of things to try to make sure that there's a safety net for our families. So in the conversations that occur from Artosa who oversees it, she also, we also find out transportation is an issue, we have families who can't bring them, transportation's an issue. We find out, oh, is it, is it clothing, is it, what is it, what is it that they need? Um, so we're always trying to figure out what is it, how do we get them to school? Is it, if it's not washing because they don't have clean clothes, we have a washer and dryer at school. So we're trying to provide those safety nets for them to actually come and be able to help them come. So we do all those phone calls are really important because it does shed light on what our student needs are, but our biggest need is some of them is transportation. So for tier two, I said, Artosa does a lot of outreach, we do SSTs, we're doing she meets with students, doing um one of the things that is hard is because parent, it is a parent's responsibility to bring students to school. So what we've been trying to do this year is apart from her calling and talking to parents, we're actually doing incentives for the students themselves. And so we started this a couple of years ago with Miss Elsa. Before we had our MTSS TOSA, where she was doing those goal setting with students and that's been working. What we're finding is if we, we meet with the child, we find out what's going on with the child and we support the child, we're finding that that's where the children are really wanting to come to school. So that's where we're getting our marbing for our buck is getting them to school through the goal setting with students independently. Especially when they're in the fourth and fifth grade. Um, we are looking at students who are referred for mental health needs, especially if they have high anxiety. So we are supporting them in those needs. Um, we meet with our parents constantly. Um, and we're just trying to really build those safety nets for our families and that the only way you learn that is through the communication with our families. And so when we go into the next, I please, when we talk about what are we doing, we're doing a lot of it, the phone calls. The phone calls work to a certain extent. At the start of the year, they're happy to hear you, by mid-year, they don't want to hear you, they don't even answer the phone. So that's why we have to do the home visit. And that's just reality, right? People don't want to be bothered anymore, I've told you, like Miss, like Catherine said, sometimes they don't, they, they don't want to hear from you anymore. But for us, it's more about the student and trying to figure out what the needs are of the student. So we have started home visits. Um, because we do brought the students in school. Um, and so we're really trying to motivate our students in terms through attendance and attendance recognition. So I believe um we have every student who has perfect attendance, whether they're tardy or not, we give them even their tardy and late, we give every month they've been getting rewards. So I think one December and Jan- December, November, we gave out a 200 rewards for the month of November of kids. So half the school got so that they had been in school. And again, if they're late and they're tardy, we still provide them the gift because it is not their fault, they're they're late, they're little kids and the parents are trying to get there. So we're really trying to emphasize the importance of school. So for us, our attendance has, we used to be at the top when I started at Taft. And we have definitely declined in our attendance. Um, but it's definitely, we're at, you know, when I look at the average daily rate, we've been at about 92, we dipped down. And then we go up months, so there's months that we're doing fairly well, and then there's months that we go down. It's definitely something that's been ongoing. Just this week, we've had a lot of kids still sick with COVID, RSV, coughing. So we are still, we're still, I mean, we feel like we're still in the pandemic, right? I feel like we're still, so all of the absences that we're still seeing, that we've been seeing since January, I feel like that's affecting our attendance too, because we're messages, don't bring your kid to school if you have a cough and I'm answering the phone in the morning and the parents are saying, oh, I had a parent the other day say, I have to, she has to go get tested for RSV, she's already missed a week. So, you know, we want them to be well. But it is hard because it is affecting our attendance and our numbers. Um, but I think that communication from the parents to us is super important. We've also put into place, um, and I didn't put it in here, but we did put into place, last year we did an online absentee so they can on, do it online. So we've had very fortunate to track those families that do do the absences online. Um, that has been very, very useful for some of those families. We would love to have more families participating, I think we just would have to show them how to do it on their phones in the app. Um, so they can do that. Um, I do think that our tier three students that are chronic, we just have to figure out a system and support system to really not get them to stop calling. Um, but we need to start sooner. So one of our goals is that we really need to start when they are in TK and K and one to the importance of attendance. Because by fourth and fifth grade, they develop some habits and students develop habits as well. So we are, one of our targets this year has been that we want to work with our Kinder and first grade families to really work on attendance so that we are not seeing the number of decline and uh as up in fourth and fifth grade. Because that's where we're starting to see a lot more students with anxiety. So we really want to target those kids this year. Next slide. So for go to our English learners, we have, we're very proud of our 18 students who have been reclassified this year. And last year we had 10. We have a huge number of English learners at Taft. But one of the things we do know is that our students do maintain, which is super important. Um, and I believe you guys have the size of the data about the percentages of students that are maintaining. So we're very proud of the fact that there are not as many students that are declining in their um, English learning, that they are moving up. Um, moving towards re- reclassifying. In fact, I was looking at our numbers, especially our fourth and fifth graders. I was looking at how many of our kids are at level three that started since they were in kindergarten. We have about 25 kids in the third and, in the fourth and fifth grade that are at level three, that were fourth and fifth grade, that started in the district with us since we were in kindergarten. So they're, whether they were at Taft, at Fair Oaks or Henry Ford. So I've been trying to track that because that allows me to see what are those kids that are at level three. So we do have a number of students. Um, and that we want to make sure we're targeting this year with, when we take the LPAC. And so one of my goals is to actually work with those kids and have them set goals. Um, so we definitely are looking at what do we need to do for our reclassification to make sure we improve those numbers so that we don't just have 17 kids or 10 kids, but we get into the twenties next year and then hopefully go on and beyond. Okay, next slide. So some of our strategies is that we do have a newcomer center, we have two classrooms that are newcomer um that we have in the system. And so one of the things we've done with our newcomer classrooms and they're not in a, they're not, the students don't just stay in their classroom, they're actually integrated into mainstream with during math and ELD time. So they're socializing with the other students, they're building rapport, they're learning what is the American school. Um, so that their social, it's been a great, that's what we see our kids. I see, always see, get to see the fourth and fifth graders coming into the new building and you see them smiling, going up to the building, up to the new classrooms. And they're very happy and they're socializing, which is very important aspect for these students who have come to our system and some of them come with a lot of trauma. So building those safety nets and building friendships is super important for them. We do try, I do trimester data meetings with our teachers and one of the goals that they have to set is for their English learners. And so students, teachers set those goals for the specifically targeted students that we're looking at that are struggling. Um, or that are not making growth. And so with their, they, teachers track them for about six to seven weeks and then we meet and target a new group. So this has been going and ongoing and we've been doing data meetings for a while now, it's not just the first year, but even during the pandemic, we had some. We did data meetings. We do trimester awards where we're encouraging and motivating our students who are making the progress. We have students who are being recognized. Um, some of them who are very quiet and are now starting to speak more in English. So we're recognizing their growth and their effort as well as their academics. We continue to build their oral language because that's huge and important through our SEAL strategy and actually through our NUAA strategies and coaching, making sure our students are talking and not silent learners is super important for our English learners. And so through NUAA and through SEAL, where they have a lot of the thinking max, which is developing that language of thinking of what is, what is it that, how they're going to communicate their thoughts and hopefully going into writing. This year, we've been fortunate to have one of our, our reading teacher um that's specifically working with third, fourth and fifth grade. And some of the groups that she has targeted that we've targeted are our students who are our long-term English learners. Um, some of those kids were newcomers when they came to the, this country, when we started at Taft. There's a handful of them that have been really struggling just to learn English. And so she's been working with them and, and reading and they're starting to make some growth because that's through the testing, that's what they have to be able to do is read and write. So we've been focusing on those students specifically in fourth and fifth grade with some of our long-term learners getting reading support. Um, with one teacher. And then the teachers themselves are doing small group instruction through ELD. Um, one of the fortunate things that we've had, and thank you to LCAP, that we do have some parent educators in our classrooms who reduce our class size, but also help generate our ELD block. So not only is the teacher doing small group, but that we have a parent professional that's also able to target kids in the classroom. Um, and so we have our intervention with after school as well. We have healthy cities tutoring, which we've identified some of our students to be our long-term English learners as well. And we have our reading churches that are targeted in individual small group instructions that these kids may not be in a group of five, maybe they need a group of three or two. So very small targeted groups. So things that we're doing, again, that are working are targeted small, small group instruction in classroom, our paraprofessionals, our reading intervention teachers. Our after-school tutoring this year has actually helped a lot. And, you know, integrating our newcomers into their classrooms. How do we know? We know they're making progress because we're seeing how, and through the assessments that we're doing just in school on our reading assessments, that some of them are starting to make some growth. And so that's super important because we know that once they start making growth in reading and writing, that it's gonna, we're gonna see the difference in our LPAC assessment. Um, and I want to clarify, in 2021, I wa- I was homesick this entire week when I was doing this, so I had to turn it in. So I was sort of like in that brain fog. We did have 10 kids reclassify in 2021 and then some, and then we had 18 because we just reclassified one more this, this month. Um, so we have been reclassifying on a steady basis at Taft. Um, so we want to keep that going and we want to make sure that we are continuing to do our designated English development. And so just recently at our staff meeting, we had a focus of of designated English development with the staff and really talking about what we're doing for ELD. What do we need to do to make sure it's front and center for our students? And so as a staff, we're working towards what are some of the goals as a staff that we're doing for designated ELD to make sure we are providing the supports for our students? So what strategies are not working at this time, we really can't state what, if there isn't one or not, that's not working. Um, and we are just continuing to do, thinking about our, how we're going to be doing our PLCs next year and across our grade levels and really focusing on ELD standards. And our teachers working together. So go three, as you know, it has to do with our eye growth, our reading and writing and task doors and eye ready. So these are some areas in which we have been struggling. Um, because we are, we, our, our community specifically was really hit by the pandemic. Our second and third graders especially. Um, and so it is, it is hard because these students were not logging on and did not have the supports. And so we are seeing the effects of the pandemic at Taft extremely. And I know we're not the only school. But we have seen some steady growth in terms of eye ready from when they first started to what we're doing now. Our teachers are really trying to implement goal setting with our students. And that has been huge because they get to see what they're doing. The kids make their own growth minds, you know, they get to check whatever, they get to see their growth and make a mark about where they want to go on their numbers. Because it already has specific targeted numbers. And teachers are actually doing their MyPath, so they're doing the data lessons. So I think that's super important. So in our cast, um, reading and writing, again, if you look at this, we didn't meet our goals. So one of my biggest concerns this year, and I'm going to be, I told Dr. Baker this the other day, that grade three 10% is, is 10% because our third graders have a lot of needs. Our interventions in reading and writing are all into second and third grade, the majority of our interventions. Because those are the kids that were very affected that are not reading at grade level. So for us, I, when I look at these stats, I'm like, okay, what is that, what did they do last year? And this is the first time they're going to take this test. And we have a lot of students that are not reading at grade level. So we're really working hard with our reading intervention teachers to really up what needs to happen. And in math, we're really working as hard as well as to trying to make sure that they're reading, they're reading because by third, fourth and fifth grade on CAS, the students have to be able to read the word problems. And if they can't read them, they can, they can have all the numbers sense they have, but if they can't read the problem, then they don't have the access to be able to do it. So we're really working hard at reading at Taft so that they can have access. Okay. So we're hoping we'll make some growth this year. So in our plan for eye reading graphs, we are continuing, we've been doing small group reading instruction in both math and reading for a number of years now. Uh, we have coaching for new teachers. I do want to say that one of the coaches for math that we had was Miss, Miss Robin Stone. And we truly miss her, we know we lost a gem when she left us at the district. But she was one that was really working with my teachers about math and teaching our kids math readiness skills. She was in our classroom, she was coaching the teachers, she was doing lessons. And math was coming alive again like it used to be. So we definitely lost a gem there. Um, I just felt like she was often at school and the teachers were opening her doors and they were welcoming the coaching and the support. Um, again, we have our instructional aids that are really helping us during that block of time. Right now, our classrooms are pretty much maxed. I have to count, turning kids away uh because we have 30 and 31 kids in some of the classroom and that's a lot of kids in third, fourth and fifth grade. Um, but we continue to move forward with our, we're lucky we have our reading, our aides to help to reduce this class size. We're doing trimester awards, recognizing growth in reading and math, not necessarily the highest, but growing in their reading and math. We want to make sure we shine a light on all the students that are growing. Um, and our eye ready goals again for students. So last year, I haven't had a chance this year, but one of my, last year, I was really consistent with all our prizing our eye ready. Kids had grown and eye ready. We were giving them books out last year and really pricing them. I just haven't had time this year because it's a lot of work, we're trying to do trimester words and then eye ready. Um, but we continue to work towards that. Um, we continue doing our targeted um instruction, data meetings with my teachers as well in ELA and math. And we continue getting coaching from the NUAA strategies and second, this year we're doing second, third, fourth and fifth grade. So in our tier two, this year we've been, and thank you to LCAP again for supporting us through, um, through CAP and tutoring in math. Again, we chose math specifically. And for our CAP students, we have chosen second and third graders. Again, we're very targeted on our students because we know they need a lot of support. And so we have had students, 25 students in our first group, we will be starting a next group of 30 students. So in total, we'll have about 55 students that will be doing CAP by the end of the year. And again, and so the second group, we are targeting second, third, fourth and fifth. So we're looking at what are our fourth and fifth graders, who are the students that need a little bit an extra push that are not making the math growth. So they're going to be working with them. So we have a group starting, um, starting An extra push that are not making the math growth. So they're going to be working with them. So we have a group starting, um, starting pretty soon at the end of the month. We do have reader intervention. We have, we've been very fortunate. We have Miss McCarthy who is amazing. Um, please don't take her away from me. I really love her. Yeah. And she's, I know she's on, she can't leave Taft. She really is an amazing reading intervention teacher. And we've been fortunate this year to have, um, our second reading intervention teacher from Hoover who came to us, Miss Esther. Who's been working with our third, fourth and fifth graders, also been making a lot of growth with our students. And then I have a part-time retired teacher, Miss Pike as well, that we paid through, through RCEF that, um, she's also making now. So all of them are have a little bit in second and third grade. Um, but they're all, we are very fortunate that we have a lot of support that is making our students really grow in their reading. And then we, of course, we have our after-school interventions with third, fourth and fifth grade teachers that are also doing their tier three. So there's very targeted groups that the teachers have selected to work with. So as you can see, if you can see our improved growth on math, on eye ready on the side, that little graph there, that really goes to looking at our eye ready. And what is our improved growth? And if you notice our concern, my concern is second and third grade. What we do see this year is that we actually have Spanish, a little bit of Spanish data for the first time because I already didn't have all the Spanish. Um, but our Spanish scores are pretty high, higher than our English scores. But again, it's because it's in Spanish and they're in the bilingual classrooms. But our second grade is some concerning there. So that's why we've been putting a lot of emphasis in second grade and reading. Um, with our intervention and third grade, because we know that's where the highest need is. But all, but there's making growth and we want to celebrate the growth that there is. We have a lot of work ahead of us. Um, but my teachers take on that challenge every single year and we do make some growth every year. So we continue with small group reading instruction and math. We continue with that reading support, um, with our aides. Um, and one of our aides, I hope we don't lose her. She's going into the student credentialing program soon in the summer. So she wants to become a teacher and she's excellent in the fourth and fifth grade. Um, we currently have about sixty-five students in reading intervention. Um, and fifty of them have made a lot of progress. Some of them are making, we're, we're still working with them. And this again was about two weeks ago. So we have teacher that are reading teachers currently undergoing the new progress. So we had some students who have now moved out of reading. So we're now in putting new students as well. Because we like to get them to grade level and then return them back so they get prizes when they get, they make that growth in, in reading. And so that, uh, that was with Miss McCarthy in her first second grade, uh, classrooms. And so we continue doing our math tutoring progress and I ready, we have our cap. Um, we have fifteen out of twenty-three students have shown growth. Um, so a quite a bit, a number of students, we have students who are struggling. Again, we have English learners, so they have a lot to learn. Some of those students are newcomers that are receiving some of that tutoring as well. Um, at this point, we don't have anything that's not working. Uh, and one of the things that we're working on as a school is we're trying to really define our bilingual program. Because we are seeing a change in our bilingual, um, student population. And so one of the things that we're looking at in our reading, especially our reading bilingual is our bilingual students in reading and Spanish are not making the growth we want to see. So it's something that we're looking at and talking about trying to educate our families while what we need to do in the bilingual program to make sure that it's working for all students. So it's something that we need to do this year. Um, we also want to just develop an outreach plan for parent engagement for reading and math. Um, we've been talking about it for, in the, and during the pandemic, we really wanted to do some, a series of parent, uh, reading and math. But we haven't been able to do that yet. So we're hoping to be able to, to start that this spring or in the fall. So one of the things we are having, well, we've been having a math festival this year as well to bring back our student engagement for math. Cause we really want to highlight math and make sure our students are engaged. I've been talking lots. So now Elsa is going to talk for the next portion.
So, uh, several of these areas, we've kind of talked throughout, like where they tie into our SIPS goals. Um, but just to kind of recap, we do continue our student of the month recognitions and that is a different character trait every month. That's everything from perseverance to responsibility. And so a teacher nominates a student based on, um, a student demonstrating, uh, this character trait. Um, we've talked about the monthly attendance and initiatives, um, and our dolphin tickets. So this is everything from students who show problem solving skills, respect to responsibility, author visits. Uh, we recently just had an author visit for the, I believe it was second and third grade. Uh, we've also had, um, our fifth grade pancake breakfast. And I think something that's, uh, crucial to point out is that we do not have a PTO, but we do have teachers and parents. As well as collaborative community partners that really support our efforts. For example, this past weekend, we just had our pancake breakfast that specifically supports students in fifth grade with going to outdoor ed. And providing scholarships. That's, uh, that was, uh, sponsored by IHOP with collaboration of our teachers, our parents. Our BGCP program, we were all there this Saturday because our goal is to make sure that every student in fifth grade who is interested goes to outdoor ed. Uh, we've talked about the math night as well as our steam night and that includes in bringing other partners like Menlo School. Who will be supporting us with our Menlo, I mean, our math, uh, family night. As well as our community fair, which is an opportunity to bring our community together and build relationships. Uh, next slide, student voice. So Miss Wen and I really try to work together on our student council process. And so we really build a condensed version of the voting process. So our kids in fourth and fifth grade. Will write speech, speech, uh, they will write their speeches, they will practice with us. They will go out and, uh, campaign and get other students to vote for them. They will, uh, vote, cast. We'll have a voting day where they'll cast their votes and get their I voted stickers as well as, um, announce as, and we kind of, uh, pave the pathway for our third grade students. We very much believe that we want to start them young and understanding what our election process is. Because the one day they will also be in those steps like the rest of us, uh, to vote. Spirit days, our students really take, uh, initiative to survey other students to see what we would like to see. Everything from, um, reading with their buddies to, uh, we, career day, which is actually was today and tomorrow is, uh, read with your buddy day. So they're surveying students and then also uh, ideas for fundraisers because we want to talk about how do we also give back to our community? And so our student council has been leading different fundraisers such as they did a hot chocolate sale. Uh, in December, which was very successful. They were really pumped about that to right now. They're doing friendship grabs. And so they've talked about like, what do we want to like give back to? And there is like a, a, uh, shelter down the street that they have talked about. Like wanting to donate, uh, for those dogs and cats and other animals. So really, uh, being like civilly, uh, engaged with our community because we know that our students are an extension of the community that we live in. We've also have encouraged our students and they are very much adamant about organizing recess games. So we'll talk about like what kind of board games or what other activities they've done bingo. Um, we set up stations that they can then, uh, lead and, um, encourage other students to engage with other students. That maybe they don't normally, or they don't commonly play with. Um, and then student clubs, uh, this is kind of one thing that I've really encouraged. So when a student comes to me or what approaches one of us about something that they would like to see at our school. We encourage them to collect, uh, list of names of students who are interested to create the flyer to go out campaigning and um, form that group and then talk about what are our goals as a club? So we've done that with a garden club. We've done that with the book club and then selecting what kind of books do we want to read? So, um, and then just, you know, other means, um, through the panorama surveys, like really looking at that data and seeing what are the trends that we're seeing with our students? Uh, next slide, please. Um, parent outreach, and this is, I think, something we see a lot across a lot of our schools. So a lot of around our principal coffee, this is an opportunity to really, um, bring in different, uh, topics. As well as partners, uh, our mental health counselor often leads the, uh, parent workshops. We've had one around self-care, around, uh, connect to correct behaviors, it's, uh, and other areas. And so we're hoping to extend that throughout the school year. Our newcomer screenings, and so these are very intentional meetings. And our goal is to support our families feel welcomed and safe in an, an environment where we're talking about system navigation, resources, programs, ways to support their child. And this is maybe everything from making sure that they're on our list for a scholarship for outdoor ed. To does that child need shoes? Um, do they need a place maybe to wash clothing? Um, what is it that they need? And so one, we're, um, recognizing like, um, them as their family unit. But also what are maybe the different areas that we need to now connect? So this may then lead to other referrals. Connecting with, uh, other nonprofits around medical housing, uh, rights, it's, uh, and other resources. We also look at our bimonthly newsletter as well as one-on-one phone outreach. So when we're talking out about, at a program, it's not a, just a blast email, but we're also targeting families that we know could benefit from a program. Or resource, um. Our parent volunteers, we very much encourage our parents to participate, whether it's pancake breakfast, steam nights. Community fairs and also, um, making sure that we prepare our families for parent teacher conferences. Uh, what are questions to ask? What do, what does the eye ready mean? So talking about these pieces as we gear up for these different, uh, times of the year. And also just encouraging things like back to school night, open house, um, and our student success team as well as attendance conferencing. Next slide. Um, so just to talk a little bit more about the family center, which is kind of where my area is focused primarily on. Uh, we do partner with various number of partners and some partners are directly onsite and others are within our community. Or they support with, uh, specific areas. Um, so I can talk a little bit about like right now, uh, we've mentioned our after-school tutoring. That is an area that I support with, uh, enrolling and communicating with parents, ensuring that our students are attending. Coordinating logistics with our extended day programs. Um, in the first trimester, we enrolled thirty-eight students. We're looking at the second trimester with enrolling an additional forty-five students for a total of about eighty-three by the end of the school year with hopefully being able to, to add a few more. Um, with our holiday program, and this is, um, again, uh, our community partners such as Menlo School, Stanford University and other private sponsors. That through the years, we've built us a program to make sure that our students and families have an additional support during the holidays. We've served a hundred ninety-nine children and ninety-six families this past winter. Um, extended day program, though we kind of see the trends of where our families need support based on the need for the extended day program. Right now, we currently have two hundred and six students of our three hundred and something enrolled in an extended day program. With eight wait lists and right now we're in conversations with one of our extended day programs about adding an additional classroom. Um, to support additional students depending on the grades. We, um, and then also another area where we'll kind of see what is happening within our community is our monthly food distributions from August to December, we served six hundred and twenty-two households. Um, another kind of just, um, point is with the support of our community school director or, or former community school director and our communications director. We were able to get a washer and dryer installed at our site to support, um, families. Uh, we target, our primary target being, uh, families that fall under McKinney Vento. Um, and so that was actually through a journey, donation of Donantech. So, uh, if there's one common trend is that our schools, uh, very much, um, it's an investment from our community and then it's an invest, investment from our district. And so this highlights a little bit of like what the work and the role is as part of the family center. Um, and this doesn't include all the referrals that we do, um, do to other organizations to support with medical housing. Et cetera. One of the biggest challenges we have seen is around transportation. And while we do have bus passes through the Samtrans program, uh, bus routes and proximity to bus stops is an ongoing challenge. Thank you.
Thank you, Elsa. So what do we need for our board? And we really want to continue to maintain the supports that we have received and through the equity focus this year. We've really seen a big impact in our school. Um, in terms of LCAP, in terms of tutoring, in terms of our counselors. Um, unlike my predecessor, Orion, we have not had a full-time school psychologist. So we have not reaped those benefits. Um, I've been at Taft five years now and I've always had a part-time. Um, and in the last three years I've had, I said during the pandemic, I had one day a week, a school psychologist. This year we had a school psychologist. Unfortunately she resigned recently, so we have downed to no one. So we have other school psychologists in the school district that are supporting Taft right now. But we are, we are really hitting a lot, a low because our school psychologist can do a lot with our classrooms and support, but we don't have one. So I'm really, I've been asking, I'm, I'm asking that with, if it's possible that we do have a full-time school psychologist. We are not just, I know we have our numbers are about three hundred and seventy right now, but our students are trauma-based kids. We have a huge support for our trauma kids. We have our counselors. But our counselors can do certain things and a counselor, a full-time school psychologist can really help support us. And really getting some of that school efficacy of what needs to happen in the classrooms as well. Um, so right now our school, I want to thank all our school psychologists are helping Taft right now. There's a number of them. Um, and I know one of them is doing some virtual, coming, uh, doing some virtual testing for us as well. And she helped us during the pandemic. So I do appreciate all of this, all of the staff from the sped department that are supporting Taft. Currently to make sure that our students are being assessed. Um, again, we have, I'd like to continue. We started with ESS for trauma-based training for our teachers. And I really would like to continue that with some coaching as well because trauma, students with trauma. We need training as teachers and as adults of how to handle some of the issues that come. Um, and how to help support our teachers. So one of the things that we've been doing is called a reset that we learned and it's a breathing technique that we learned. And so we've all been practicing that in our classrooms with our students, but I know it's just one little strategy that we got from our last training. So I'd like to be able to continue that, um, type of training for our staff. Sorry. I'd also like to, uh, we have had our two, we've had some paraprofessionals and for helping support reduced class size. I'd like for the district to continue with that and I thank you, um, Liz, I believe you said we were going to continue with that next year. So thank you. Our behavior therapist, um, we have had a very, very, I have to say hats down to our behavior therapist Samuel. Mr. Gomez, who's really helped support our teachers and really learning how to handle some of the behaviors that we have this year. Um, with our little ones that are really having difficulty, we've set some things, he's helped our teachers set things into play. And our students are finally making some progress. So it's good to see that some of those behaviors are actually changing into positive things in the classroom. Um, one of the biggest things that we have is the fingerprinting. I don't, we don't have as many parent volunteers. Um, to attend field trips because fingerprinting is very costly. And for our families that have lost jobs or that are single parents, it's really costly for them to get, go and get fingerprinting. So I don't know what else we need to do. We're trying to figure out how to get our parents to get, they're willing, they just can't afford it. And I want to help make sure that if we have possibility that they're continue funding for CAP next year if possible. We are seeing a great impact with CAP, um, for funding. So it just is, there's a lot that has been put into place this year specifically. That I finally feel like we're on the rise and we're making a difference with our students. And it's because, not because of one thing, it's because of everything coming together. Um, but I do want to end with thanking my staff because Taft is me, I'm not Taft. Taft is the teachers, my faculty, um, my family coordinators, my mental health specialist, our yard duties, um, who day in and day out come in. And when I'm not there, they're there every single day. Um, and, um, I really do appreciate them. So I know they're online. So I really want to make sure I thank them. They know how much I appreciate them. Um, but I want to make sure they know publicly how I feel because I think without my staff, Taft wouldn't be here. And we have some great teachers at Taft. And it takes a lot to be a Taft teacher. So the teachers that had truly have been there for almost twenty-something years, they've been there a long and they're in there for the long way because they know. And they want to make a difference for our students. because they know and they want to make a difference for our students. So thank you.
Thank you. And again, I'll leave it up for you guys to make any comments or any questions. And you guys are welcome to go in whatever order you guys want.
I, I have, um, so thank you so much for your presentation. You're, you're, you're hardworking, your passion for the, the kids really shows through, so thank you so much. I do have a question, sorry, I, I just noticed this, but on the slide on chronic absenteeism, it notes of five percent Hispanic absenteeism. And I was just wondering if that was correct because the twenty one, twenty two SIPSA mentioned thirty eight percent. And it was thirty four percent at Orion. So I'm just trying to figure out if we're, we're working from the same numbers. And again, apologies that I didn't notice this until, uh, tonight.
Which is that second one? Is that for the goal?
Yeah, here, the, um, the, the left column, so Hispanic spring twenty twenty two percentage is this target or actual is five percent?
So five percent was the spring and then our target is twenty twenty three is tw- five percent.
Okay, so that would
We haven't changed the target because we didn't meet the goal last year.
Okay, but the, the current chronic absenteeism in the Hispanic community at Taft is, is five percent?
No, that's just our goal.
Oh, okay.
That's just our goal. Our, our chronic absenteeism is higher than that.
Got it, so, so both of these columns are goals.
Correct, yeah, those are just our goals, yeah.
So sorry, I got confused by that. Okay, thank, thank you for that clarification. It made me really happy in this to, uh, be looking through both this and the supplementary material to see that, um, the focus is really on the deltas because I totally, uh, can appreciate that it's not about where the students are at per se, but how quickly they are progressing. And I don't know if I can speak for the rest of the board, but that's absolutely what I'm looking at is not just like where are the students scoring? But are the students making good forward progress? And so I think that's, that's laudable that that is, that is the focus to, to focus on improving the students and meeting them where they're. I thought it was so great that, uh, you saw so much progress from having goals come from the students, right? And so that, that's, uh, you know, the board is probably getting sick of me harping on metacognition, right? But like really having, um, the, the students co formulate the plan and then own the plan for their own education is, is a proven technique for going and, and driving, uh, high quality results. So it's wonderful that, um, that you, that you're seeing some, some real forward progress there. Something that's come up in a couple of different school sites, it is super evident here, so I'm really grateful that you called it out. Is I think the need for the districts to help parent volunteers get enrolled and help parents get fingerprinted. I can imagine some sort of like mass drive day where like fingerprinting bus shows up and like, come after drop off, it'll take you five minutes. We've got this like well oiled machine, it's like come on through, biddy, biddy, biddy. And you're, you know, now you're, you're signed up to be a volunteer, right? If there's something that we can do in partnership with any of the fingerprinting providers to do that, it is in the district's best interest for parents to be involved, engaged, volunteering, present on campus. Um, and so if there are things that we can do, I would like to encourage us to go and, and, and explore those things. And that's, that's all for me. Thank you so much for your presentation, I, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Mike, do you want to go next?
Sure, yeah, I can go, yeah, thank you, thank you Taft. So that's, uh, Anna and Elsa presenting tonight and of course the staff. But then also the, the families and the, um, and the students. And you mentioned it in talking about suspensions, about how it's collaboration and communication and how important that is. Actually, I also love the way you talked about like you just have to build the safety net and, uh, the academics will follow. Um, and it's such a, such a great focus, particularly, um, all, all the time, but particularly, um, still coming out of, you know, the last few years of, of pandemic. Really diving into the social groups, uh, talking about that. And then later on, when we got to the student data, hearing about some of the student led activities, um, and how that's working through, you know, and with, what the kids are focused on, not just in their schools, but even outside of the school of how they want to fundraise for, for that kind of stuff. It really, um, it really kind of just, uh, reminds me of what a great community you're building there. You know, for, for the students and for the families that are there. And we saw it in the parent quotes, right? Like they, they would say that, hey, this is a community and I, I just, so important. And I'm so glad to hear all of that coming. I really appreciated how you would separate out the data in your presentation. I think we saw this in one of the other ones too for, you know, to be able to give us an idea of how students getting certain interventions like reading specialists or the cap tutoring, um, and how they were progressing within that, that was really helpful to see in the report. Um, and particularly because last week I was, I was glad that we were able to, um, approve the agreement, amended agreement to have another cohort come. Um, and it's really nice to then follow that up with, hey, this is why it's being successful and why we're helping. So, so thank you for including that in the report. And the last thing is, you know, we do hear about how, um, coaching comes in, but your, uh, your, your, your praise for Robin, um, just and how, uh, teachers would open their door for the coaching comes in. It just reminds like, like how important coaching is and how much people are, are enjoying it and they get out of it. And so that anecdote, I think is going to stick with me a little bit from, from the presentation. Yeah, I think that's, uh, that's, uh, that's pretty much everything that I had, but thanks again for presenting.
Thank you.
Um, all right, thank you so much, really appreciate the presentation and I love what you're doing at Taft. And, um, I really liked how you ended your presentation and just, uh, thanking the staff, particularly those teachers and staff that have been around for a long time. We know that, um, you know, it does take a lot to teach and we know that, you know, the Taft community was hit hard by COVID and the pandemic, harder than a lot of other communities. You know, the families were out there working, being exposed to COVID, it was coming back into the families, you know, they're living in tight quarters. I mean, all those sorts of things. And so I really appreciate all the work that you've done all during COVID and then particularly the last couple of years trying to help the kids kind of get where they need to be. And it's telling just in a lot of the slides and the comments that you made, like all the students, all the student and family supports that we're providing, both through the community school, which I'm so proud of our community schools and so grateful that we have them. And we've continued to fund them even though, you know, we struggle with budgets and that sort of thing. So it, it's amazing what's going on there and just, um, you know, you're so right, like we have to support the families because if the families are not supported, then the kids are not going to be coming to school and they're not going to be learning. So, um, really appreciate all that you're doing there. Appreciate the, the work on the attendance, I know how hard that is and you know, it sounds like you're doing a lot. Been thinking more on transportation, you know, there, there was a few of us and, and Dr. Baker wrote some letters and I helped support with letters and are, trying to get some different bus routes. And unfortunately Sam Trans is also going through, you know, budgeting and staffing issues, so they don't support us the way that we'd hope. Um, but I'd like for us to continue thinking about that if maybe there's some additional, we, we've heard transportation now from a, from a, I think all three schools in the Baysides, maybe we need to think a little bit about, is there more we could be doing there, um, to help get kids to school? Let's see, oh, I also just, you know, did want to give a shout out on the student led activities. I just think that's so important for them to be engaged in their learning, whether it's the clubs or the, you know, recess activities or in the classroom. So thank you for, for doing all of that. And, um, let's see, I did also want to say, uh, the fingerprinting, we've heard from now a couple of schools and I'd heard last year as well. So I think that's something we need to talk about as a district, is there more we could be doing? Again, it would be, you know, maybe we could try to find a partner out there who we could give them a little splash on the bus or whatever it is, you know, to help us out. But yeah, I, I'd like for fingerprinting not to be a barrier for our parents to, to be a part of the school. So, so we need, we need to figure out that, that, so you're not the only school that said that, so. And part of this is that, uh, you know, many years ago, I don't think we were doing it as rigorously as we are doing it now. And so a- as these new issues come up, we need to hear about them so we can adjust our budgets and figure out how to help. So, um, it's really just become an issue, I think, in the last couple of years. And I think, um, yeah, I think that's, that's all I'll say. So, so, um, and I did want to give a shout out to all the staff and, uh, parents who are on the, uh, site tonight. Thank you so much for everything you're doing. Oh, actually, the one other thing, the garden, I forgot, I did want to mention the garden. And, uh, did you say that you have grant money for that or you're still looking for money to help get the garden back?
So we had a small grant, um, was it ten, was it? We apply, we applied, Elsa knows more about it, I'll let her talk about the grant. We've been trying to, because our old garden was up and running and then the new building came in, right? So we don't have, uh, we have an area we want to put a garden in. Okay. And so we did, um, write a grant last year to get some planter boxes in unfortunately. But we also don't know, we need to be able to have an irrigation system. And so we've been trying to find out, partner up with different community. We did have, um, and I think Martin has been involved in it. We're trying to figure out how to make our new plot to a new garden. So our, we have our garden again, because we just have planter boxes outside. And so some teachers, um, have been using the planter boxes and our mental health counselors, one of our goals this year is that in the spring is for the planter boxes to have new plants for the garden, to make it map area at least for the garden for some of our students because they like to be out there as well. But we do have an area we want to, and so our grant is to provide planter boxes, um, and some items so that we can start our, our garden.
Okay. Um, well, I'm glad you brought that up because I've been in conversations and in fact, we're having another one tomorrow, Dr. Baker, it's on your calendar with the group. Oh, we do, okay, anyway, but, um, you know, basically there, there are different grants about greening school sites. You know, there's city trees, there's cow fire and some others. And actually I think I can connect you up with, um, a community member who might be willing to help a little bit. So that's great. And then, you know, we also have a short list of things for, uh, measure T as we're, um, drawing down on that, depending upon what it is. So I'm glad you're talking to Martin because I, I just feel like we need to try to, we need to support you in, in getting the garden back.
Yeah, we would, our vision, it's nice because it's right by our playground so that they can actually use it during the playground.
Absolutely, and it's so important for hands on, for science, for, you know, you know, learning, so, okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Well, I'm just going to sound like an echo now. Thank you, thank you very much for your presentation and all the, um, staff that are in the audience right now. Appreciate you sticking out at the late night. Um, all my echoing, I, fingerprinting should not be a barrier to volunteering, um, we've got to do something about it. I fully believe that. Transportation also is something that we keep hearing about, it's, it's a barrier for getting kids to school. So we need to figure out what we can do about that too. I'm really happy to hear that there are, the families are actively seeking out mental health, um, and not just going as referrals through staff. So I think that, that's, um, fantastic that you've, um, gotten word out and they understand and know and they want to seek that help for their, for their students. I fully agree with you on suspensions too. So I'm happy to see the low numbers there. You know, I say this every meeting, if they're not in school, they're not learning. But also suspensions are a reward for kids who don't want to be in school, right? They know what they need to do to go home. One of my own students is like that, not anymore, he used to be. And so, uh, I definitely appreciate seeing the low suspension numbers. And then I'm really happy to see the decrease in behavior, um, that you've had at your campus too with your social emotional learning and, um, all that. So I think you're doing great work. We all know there's a lot of work to do, you have a really, um, high needs, um, community and, uh, a, a really unique community. So I think you're doing good work with them, um, and we still have more to go. So thank you for being here.
Thank you, thank you. And then of course, I also don't want to be an echo, but I do want to say obviously thank you and thanks to all the staff, teachers, classified staff that work at your school site. Um, and then I do want to bring something up. Obviously, there's a lot of, if we want to call them barriers that your school site has. So just like I spoke to Catherine about Orion and how the mental health person probably needs and all the other teachers that work extra hard. You are actually working really hard and your staff too. You're talking about students have trauma. So that's another, you know, big boulder that you have to somehow go around it to still help your kids out and still make everyone feel welcome. Newcomers, I mean, that alone, it's those kids, I know what it feels like to come into this country and not know a word of English. And it's so hard, even though you feel welcome, the anxiety is there. Thirty years later, sometimes I do say, you know, my E O S L comes in, so I totally understand. But I do want to point something out on the bright side. I remember attending the graduation last year and you pointed out this one young student that graduated. I do want to tell you, he didn't reclassified from you, but he reclassified from McKinley. So kudos to Taft because you guys probably gave him that background that he needed, that stepping stone, and he has now reclassified. So again, thank you. So, you know, again, there, there's a lot of things that of course as a board we have to think about. And, um, it kind of makes me emotional because it, it is really sad to see the big difference between some school sites and what some people take for granted when we live it, right? And so the students do too. But I do want to tell you that of course, just like with the previous, um, school in every school, we are here to support everyone. But there are schools that are really suffering and that we as a board need to do something about it. And again, I do want to commend you and all your staff for all the hard work. And like you mentioned, all the teachers that have been here, they're committed to teach those kids and make them be a good citizen. So I, I really appreciate it, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
So Anna, um, you brought up the pandemic and you know what hell that was. But I want to commend you, if you remember those years when, when that happened and we went out, you were one of the first ones that said, I want to bring the kids back. So you did bring the kids back, you got your teachers. We got help from the union, remember the MOU? To bring kids back to Taft. Not all parents wanted to come back though, there were all these rumors out there and and we had the pods and you got the pods also with the Boys and Girls Club. So you could have, you know, smaller groups of kids, even though the Boys and Girls Club, they were not in, you know, teacher, credential teachers, but at least the kids would be away from home. They would help them with the virtual learning. And then your teachers would do in person and then swap and do virtual. So, you know, kudos to you, you were, you were the one of the first ones to bring them back. We were out what, maybe six weeks?
It wasn't, yeah, we restarted the plan in October and we brought them back in November, our first group.
And, and so, you know, you have to commend yourself and your staff because you knew the kids needed to be back in school. And because for, it wasn't working, it was, and teachers were saying, it's not working, we, you know, that we don't see them, they turn the camera off, all that business that was going on. And then to really start to meet with parents and say, you need to bring them back, you know, we're not bringing them back, there's COVID, there's COVID. We don't believe, you know, even though they're masked, it's still going to happen, it's still going to happen. So through all of that, you went and made sure that number one, for those who wanted to come back, we're really getting person to person educate, instruction. For those that didn't, there was a virtual piece and your teacher still did it. Number two, you're out there giving food to all those families that needed the food. And my God, it was, those lines, I remember those lines, my gosh. And then Elsa, the rent assistance. The, the finding, you know, of, um, a place for people to live, that was another thing. You were both out there doing all these community activities that one, number one, as a principal, as an educator, we don't know where to go with that. But along with Elsa to do the community piece, to go out and bind those resources. And with you, with the experience of being an educator and knowing kids need to come back, you need to pat yourself really well on the back. I know the kids have a lot of trauma.
Yeah.
And when I visit you and I know you're working with a child or we're following a child around because of a certain reason. Your heart is with the kid, you know, with the kids. And, and I know what you see is not, when it comes to, um, test scores and so forth, it's not, is, is not what you want to see. And as David said, we just want to, we want to see growth, we're not expecting you years. And as David said, we just want to, we want to see growth. We're not expecting you years, years growth, two years growth. We want to see growth. And then also how to, you know, definitely how to support you. We heard about, we heard about the full-time psychologist. The fingerprinting, I think we can do, we just need to talk, I need to talk to Warren and his, uh, well, no, no, I want to talk to Warren. His was really different from what's
Find the budget. You just get me the fingerprint person to do it.
I, I want to talk to Warren. They, they did, they did.
Yeah, they did some.
Yeah, his, his, um, PTO. And, um, Arisali, who, who works at Stanford, who I know really well, she was talking to me about it. So if they can do it.
Yeah, we just have to figure it out. So we can bring them so we can have them. Yeah, yeah. I have RCF who's willing to support too. So I just need to figure out the system.
It's a system and she has it down to a science. So I've already connected with her. So we'll make it happen. We'll make it happen. But then we have to make it happen for the other, other sites that want it, you know?
Yeah.
So we'll, you can drive it. Yeah. So we'll, we'll make that happen and, and we'll see what others, what other things we can do. But at the same time, you know, um, you've done an outstanding job in the last couple of years. So thank you, thank you. I just wanted to remind you about that piece. When, you know, we met, you said, we have to get these kids back. We have to get kids back. I've got the teachers that want to come. Now what can you do?
And I did have almost all my teachers wanting to be back, but we had to do virtual as well.
So half the morning, in the morning, I think they had in-person afternoon, they flipped it and went, those kids that their parents wouldn't let them come to
And we, we had, we had, we had all, all three. We had the morning in-person, we had some virtual, and then we had morning and afternoon.
And then you had the pods.
We had the pods. So we had everything happening at Taft, but our kids were back at least socially. And they learned to play without touching each other. So, um, they were very creative at, at, at playing, at playing tag. So, yeah.
So thank you so much. Thank you both, Elsa. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And I'm enjoying our new building and new office. So are our kids. Thank you.
Okay, so item thirteen consent items. Can I please get a motion?
I'll move second. Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Vice President Lawson, President Marcus.
Aye. Okay, so action items fourteen point two, adoption of resolution number twenty five, determination of order of employment for certificated employees for elimination of or reduction in particular kinds of services for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Thank you. This is an annual, um, request for the board uh, in anticipation if we happen to need a layoff for certificated staff to set the criteria to make a determination how we move through the seniority list. So the seniority list is attached and the criteria, which is in a resolution. Are there any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Roll call please.
Trustee Week.
Aye.
Trustee McGoey.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Vice President Lawson.
Aye.
President Marcus.
Aye.
Board and superintendent reports.
I have nothing to report.
Me neither.
I don't either.
I, uh, did, did attend the North Star Musical Frozen, which was wonderful. The students really did a great job and Maureen McFerry is always does a fantastic job. And, uh, I had another CSBA Annual Education Conference Committee, uh, lots of good stuff happening there. And then I met with a couple of, uh, different parent, like small parent groups, just about different things.
So I'm moving on with information. Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, I met with a gentleman, well, didn't meet with him, but we had a phone call and we're going to have a meeting. It's a person who lives in Woodside and who really wants to help the Redwood City School District students. He definitely will support Bayside activities. So I need to know what more is behind this because sometimes you'll get, um, people that want to help, but I don't know what the strings are. So, uh, I will have a conversation with him. Um, probably next week or the week after, meeting for coffee and they're interested in helping our kids who really need more assistance. I just don't know what the catch is and I need to find that out. Find a staff, right? But, uh, let me see what that's about. Then I'll, I'll let you know. Right? But I think that, that is, and then tomorrow, no, it's happening tomorrow. That's it for me.
Thank you. Um, so moving on to item sixteen, information sixteen point one. Redwood City School District Review of Connect Community Charter Schools First Ex interim Financial Report for twenty-two, twenty-three. Other.
Yeah, uh, I'll just say, uh, good evening, board. Uh, sixteen dot one through sixteen dot six are, are three charter organizations with their first interim report. Uh, and their, uh, auditor financials from the twenty-one, twenty-two school year for review. We are monitoring these as we normally do, uh, a huge amount of gratitude to, uh, the fiscal services staff that goes through uh, meticulously, uh, stacks of paperwork from each of these charter organizations, uh, especially around the interim reports. Uh, and now we're anticipating, uh, receiving their second interim reports in the, uh, upcoming weeks. Uh, going through a similar process for that. Uh, so with that, I'll hand it back over to the board. If there's any questions on a specific, uh, charter school, uh, first interim or annual or audit report.
Yeah, I, I didn't have any questions. I just wanted to say thank you very much to the team who's working on this because it's a lot of work to go through this and do our due diligence. So thank you.
And I know that you answered my question, so I appreciate it. Mike, do you have anything?
Nope. Thank you. Uh, the, thanks to the staff for putting them all together.
Okay. Thank you. So item seventeen correspondence. You know, we got a lot of emails. Okay. And then so eighteen, other business suggested items for future agendas.
If there's an update on the fingerprinting, that'd be great.
Okay. And then board meeting calendar, are there any changes?
We will need to place the
I would just suggest if we do have a night where there's going to be three of them on one, let's start the board meeting early again. And I don't know, that, that might be a lot to
There was, there was a reason why we had to start early tonight.
Right, well.
But we were, we, we would never, we never contemplated three at
Oh, okay. Cause there was three originally and so we would have been here another hour. Okay. Yeah. Anyway.
Three with, was because of, remember, um, we, we took off Orion last time.
Well, that's what I mean. So if you're going to put Garfield on another one with two, I would just suggest that either we don't do that or we
Okay, we're going to do that.
All right. I think we just showed, it, it just, it's a lot to absorb. And so it would be a disservice to the third school, I think. Yeah, yeah. Okay, good. I just wanted to put that out there since we're talking about calendars and things. Okay, great. Thanks.
Okay, so with that said, someone wants to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I moved to adjourn.
I will second that.
Some favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank everybody who chanted out online. Bravo.
Look, we got them before ten.